Good morning, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
My Pledge of Allegiance is by the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we take the roll, I would ask you please to turn off any pagers or cellphones, so as not to disturb the hearing. Would the Secretary please take the roll?
Commissioner Nora Adukas?
Here.
Commissioner Steven Onstott?
Here.
Chair Leo Molitor?
Here.
Commissioner Michael Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is for public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on this agenda. Have we had any requests for public comments not on the agenda? Thank you. We'll move on now to item number five, which is, excuse me, Appeal 09-0010, David Murdoch and Sherwood Valley Homeowners Association Appellants. Generally, we operate by having the staff make a presentation, and then we have disclosures. We may question the staff. At that time, I will open a public hearing. The appellant would speak first, and I would read the cards. If you haven't filled one out, I've taken them in order. All the speaker cards to those people who are in favor of the requested action, and then we'll hear from those people who oppose the recommended action. The appellant, in this case, would have a chance for a rebuttal. At that time, we'd have closing comments by staff, and then I'll close the public hearing, and the Planning Commission will deliberate and decide what issues or what decisions they wish to make. So I'd like to start by having...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, please. In announcing the hearing, I believe you misquoted or misstated the appeal. It's AP 00-0011.
Oh, I said differently. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez.
I think you just said 00. It's AP 09-0011.
Thank you.
Well, we're off to a good start. I hope it gets better from there on. All right, we'd like to hear now from the staff, hear the staff report. And would you please push those microphones together? There's a little difficulty hearing with that. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, I'm Andrea Ozde with the County Planning Division, and the project is AP 09-0011. It's an appeal, as you mentioned. The first slide that we have is a location map. This project is located in Lake Sherwood, just outside the gates. It's at the corner of Petrao Road and Stafford Road, and it is within the Lake Sherwood and Hidden Valley area plan. Here's an aerial photograph. You get a better look of what the parcel shape is. Has a unique feature where it has, it's almost like a straw that goes into Lake Sherwood. It's a land extension that crosses Stafford Road and goes into the lake. And also, you can see a previously graded pad, and also the driveway, existing driveway that comes up from Petrao Road to the pad where the new house is proposed. These are the development plans that were submitted back in June by the applicants, Bob and Audrey Byers, and it's a new home, and also an accessory structure, a pool, various components to the project there. The main axis is from Petrao Road, and the secondary axis goes down to the land extension across and into the lake. The previously graded pad was from CUP 5090, so this is a minor modification to that. There's a planned development permit here, and the CUP minor mod. The driveway down to Stafford Road fulfills a couple of functions. It provides the applicant access to their land extension. It also provides them a shorter way to get into Lake Sherwood where they currently live. And finally, it provides the fire department's access requirements. They have a couple of options on how they can provide fire department access. This is one of them. The other one would be a fire turnaround. After the project was approved by the Planning Director in December, we had an appeal filed by the Sherwood Valley Homeowners Association and David Murdoch. The appellants say that the property does have access down to their land extension, but not to any other part of Stafford Road. It's a private road, so they're arguing that none of the area that's shown in blue on the slide, except for the area within the parcel, is area that the applicant can access. Also, they're concerned that there would be traffic delays and hazards as a result of the construction of the project, and also the routine use of that driveway. People turning left and right would disrupt the traffic there. And finally, that the driveway and also the trash being displayed there is not the look that they are looking for for the entry to Lake Sherwood. The next couple of pictures are submitted by the appellant, trying to demonstrate what the issues are. And this picture shows trash that's existing. It's out there just every week or whenever the trash is picked up, and it's just not the best look for the entry into Lake Sherwood. The reason there's trash there right now is because there's another parcel that also has an extension into the lake, and they have developed their property. This is their trash. So the concern is that there would be more trash, another one of these, at the entrance to Lake Sherwood. This is the other picture that was submitted by the appellant. It shows the line of traffic that is waiting to get into the gate, and the driveway, proposed driveway, is right about where that sign is that you can see on the side of the road. And cars turning left and right into, or out of that driveway is a concern, traffic safety concern, that was proposed by the appellant. It's stated in the staff report, the county does not have the authority to determine the access to Stafford Road. It's a private agreement. We cannot enforce the CCNRs, the public, or the safety on that private road, and speed limits, which are also private speed limits. The county is responsible for determining that development is occurring on a legal lot. This is a legal lot. It has access to a public road, has water and sewer availability, and also a buildable site. The Byers have stated that they do have access to Stafford Road via a 1928 easement, and we have received nothing that counters that, nothing that has given us evidence where we believe that that might not be true. We have accepted what the applicant has stated as truth. And it would be outside the county's authority to validate or enforce that private agreement. So the issues raised are civil, it's private between property owners, and the issues need to be resolved privately. If the secondary access cannot be done as proposed, then the applicant will need to go back, redesign, provide that turnaround that'll give the fire department access back down to Petrao Road. So based on the evidence provided in the staff report, the Planning Division recommends that your commission deny Appeal Number AP 09-0011 for all the reasons stated by Planning Staff Report above. Find on the basis of the negative declaration, including the initial study attached thereto, and any comments received, that there is no substantial evidence the project will have a significant effect on the environment. Approve and adopt the negative declaration in Exhibit 10, and direct the Planning Director to file a notice of determination within five days with the county clerk. Find that, subject to the conditions of approval set forth in Exhibit 2, the proposed project LU 09-0077 and LU 09-0078 conforms to the County General Plan and the County Non-Costal Zoning Ordinance. Approve the proposed project LU 09-0077 and LU 09-0078. And finally, designate the Planning Director, Resource Management Agency, and the clerk of the board as the custodians in the location of the record of proceedings. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions?
Andrea, thank you for the presentation. Before we get to questions and disclosures, first questions, you brought up the issue of easement not being within the purview of the Planning Department and the Planning Commission. I'd like to have the county council at least review for us the title and easement question at this point.
Certainly, Commissioner Molitor and members of the commission, I'd like to begin first by stating that this is an appeal before you, and your appeal jurisdiction is governed by the Non-Costal Zoning Ordinance at Section 8111-7. It gives you the authority to review the decision that is brought before you. In this case, the Planning Director's decision to issue the CUP, the minor modification, and the project, as Ms. Ozde has explained to you. That's before you. Did that, was that decision proper based on the facts and evidence that was before the Planning Director at that point in time? In addition to that, and let me just cite to you a case that governs this whole issue of appeals. It's a case called Clark versus City of Hermosa Beach. And in that case, on appeal, you have, you're not merely to review the decision of the Planning Director for error, but you are also to hear the matter de novo, which means from the outset or as brand-new, to take additional evidence at a public hearing and decide whether it should grant or deny the permit. So not only are you looking at the review of the Planning Director's decision of whether or not error was committed, you also have the decision before you, which is the CUP modification and the project that's before you, to grant or to deny it. In that code section I just referred to you in the Non-Costal Zoning Ordinance, it gives you the following decision options. You can approve it, you can deny it, or you can approve with modifications. That's basically it. That's what's before you. So in this case, you talked about the easement question, and in the staff report, staff is indicating that when they receive information for these applications, the applicant signs and verifies that all the information given to staff is true and correct, and can be used in the processing of whatever entitlement that they're seeking. At that point in time, staff will use that information to do its project analysis and processing. It is not in a position, again, as Ms. Ozde has already indicated, to determine the validity of a private easement and the parties to it. The county has no standing in a private easement situation, and we're not going, and the county is not given the authority either through its ordinance or by state law to go in and determine the validity of that. There is recourse if, in fact, that representation was false. And that's already indicated in the staff report, that staff would be in a position of having to either revoke or modify the permit on its own initiative, or to seek some other redress in those type of situations. You, however, have more information than I believe that staff even had when it processed this application, and it comes to you in the form of a letter from council representing the Byers. And that, I believe, is Exhibit A, and I'm not going to go into what that exhibit says. I'm going to leave that up to the Byers' party to explain what they have provided to you. But that is valid information for you to consider then, because as I said to you before, this is information as a de novo hearing to consider, to grant, to deny, or to grant with modifications the CUP that's before you. So with that being the case, you now have information about the easement, and that's one of the major issues here, is that the appellant is saying they have no right to do what they're proposing to do. The applicant is saying they do have that right, and they're bringing evidence forward to you. In a sense, you're now the judge of fact as to that element of the application. So in a sense, you do have some review rights to it, but in the case of staff, that's a separate question. When the Planning Director acted, was it valid, given what she had and what she knew? That's one question. Question for you then, is now you have additional information, what are you going to do with that? Is that valid? And can you grant, deny, or modify?
Excuse me. So the applicant for the CUP, the Byers, have presented us with information that they do have easement entitled. I'm assuming then that the appellant is going to have to dispute that.
The appellant, yeah, correct.
And convince us.
Right. The appellant has the burden of proof in this case. They brought the appeal. They have to show that, one, there was error committed by the Planning Director when she made her decision, and then, secondly, this question of the CUP, because it's a de novo hearing again, should not be granted by you as a Planning Commission for whatever reasons that they bring forward to you.
Thank you.
An issue has also been raised regarding the appellants' concern about the look of their entry, the trash receptacles, whatever. Does the same thing apply? Do we have, does the county have the ability to control the use of private property in terms of directing where these things are placed or how they're placed, or is this a private issue also?
Um, I...
Would it be governed by CCNRs or something like that, or is it in the public arena?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I don't have the best answer for that. I don't know if CCR covers the days of trash pickup or the placement of trash. Some of it may be waste management. I'm not sure who is the trash provider for that area. Maybe Planning Director has a better answer than I do on that question. But again, if it's a CCNR issue, just on that general basis, again, the county doesn't get involved in CCNR enforcement, and there are citations to the government code that govern that issue. I don't have those with me now, but there is statutory law that govern and restrict government entry into CCNR enforcement and HOA rules. Thank you.
Any other questions for council at this point? Yes, Commissioner. Okay. Then before we have questions for Andrea, I'd like to have disclosures. At this time, I would like to ask each Planning Commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Commissioners?
I have no disclosures, other than I've been past this property many, many times.
Commissioner Onstott?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Westner?
Same as Commissioner Adukas, nothing outside of this, but have been by this property in Lake Sherwood many times over the last 20 years.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
Thank you. Now we have questions for staff. Any questions? Commissioner Westner?
First one is, have you had an opportunity to review Exhibit A, which you've been handed this morning by the Byers' council?
I have read through it, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure staff was aware of this. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner.
I didn't hear whether or not you had any disclosures. Did I skip that?
Thank you. I went right by me. No, I have no disclosures. I don't, I've been to the property, but I don't even remember the road. Thank you.
Regarding county standards for screening of trash, there are in the non-coastal ordinance standards for keeping your trash receptacles, you know, taken up or stored out of public view, aren't there?
We don't have anything specific. We do have setback requirements, so if someone wanted to shield their trash, they would need to conform with the non-coastal zoning ordinance there. But we don't have anything specific that talks about trash needing to be pulled in at a certain time.
Is there, do we have the discretion to ask the Byers if they're willing to have a condition on this? This is a minor modification that's been appealed?
I believe we discussed that at the original hearing, that the applicant would be perfectly willing to pull in their trash, have it in a separate, more shielded area than what was shown on that one photo, that the, how the neighbors are currently doing that.
And could you tell me which neighbors?
They're directly to the west. Is that covered?
Could you use the...
Oh. Is it this one?
Could you just take the cursor and show me which neighbor it is, or with a laser pointer?
Oh, great, thank you. It is this one right here. And they go down this area right here to put their trash down.
And Waste Management doesn't have the ability to pick up trash on Petrao there because...
That is what I have heard, but that is not something that the county gets involved with, where the trash gets picked up.
I'm just trying to find out what the fact is, not whether or not we can change it, but...
Right. What I have heard from the applicant, and also in one conversation with Waste Management, is that, no, they don't want to pick up the trash anywhere other than the Stafford Road entrance.
And these people contract independently with Waste Management? That's not something part of, I know that, for example, the City of Thousand Oaks has a contract with Waste Management and the haulers and whatnot. These people in the unincorporated areas, how is their trash pickup managed?
I don't know the answer to that. Nancy or Ken?
Nancy Francis. I don't know either. I don't think that you can go out and contract, you know, on your own. I believe that these, like in my neighborhood, you know, there is a service that provides to my neighborhood. I know trash is pretty well regulated, so, but no, we don't have any firsthand knowledge on that.
Okay. And what is the difference between a secondary access and a primary access?
The primary access, that's the designation that the applicant has given us. They've shown us two access points. We ensure that they do have access to Petrao Road, so what they've provided to us is adequate for access. For secondary access, that is something, it's a preference on their part, it's a design element, and also it happens to fulfill the fire department's need.
So there's nothing that says, you know, your primary access has to be used 51% of the time, or...
No, no.
Okay. All right, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Andrea. I'd like to open the public hearing, and we will hear first by the appellant and any other cards that I have that are supporting the action of the appellant. I have a card from Mr. Byers, and it says opposed appeal, so I don't think that's... Anyone who wishes to make a presentation, if there are attorneys here or anyone who wishes to make a presentation and represent the appellant, please come forward now, and please state your name and address.
Good morning. I'm, excuse me, Carol Stevenson. I'm General Manager of Sherwood Valley Homeowners Association. I believe you do have a card there.
Last name?
Stevenson.
Yes, I do. I am still, all right, I'll call the names that I have for those people who support the recommended action. Richard, is this Ziling?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Richard Zilinga, on behalf of the Byers, the property owner. I'd like to start out by letting our architect make a few comments, and then Mr. Byers and I will wrap up very quickly.
Okay. Mr. Chair, just, I think we're getting a lot of order, and this always gets confused with appeals and applicants and all that kind of thing, so is there anybody who wants to speak on behalf of Lake Sherwood or the Sherwood, because they're the appellants, and that's our procedure? That's all right with you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you. Correct.
Other than the Byers. And trust me, we get just as confused between appellants, applicants, and I think of Lou Costello and Abbott. Who's on first? I don't know. Third base. Okay. That's true.
Okay, I'll go first, and then we also, Tom Comber is here for Sherwood Development Company. I think you have a card for him as well. As I stated, I'm...
Will you try to speak up a little?
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. As I said, I'm the General Manager of Sherwood Valley Homeowners Association, and I'm here to speak to you about the safety and the traffic conditions. That's my main focus, since I'm in charge of security and safety for the property. Since I've been there 12 years in April, speeding has been a constant source of problems. I've had many, many, many complaints from homeowners over the years. They come to the board meetings, they call me, complain about speeding and the traffic conditions. So my main concern is the speeding on Stafford Road. I won't even go into on the property, because right now we're focusing on Stafford Road coming into the gate. Also, the disruption of traffic. That is our main source of entrance for homeowners, visitors, and vendors. We have some very large trucks that come in there that are going to the both country clubs, the beer trucks, the milk trucks, the bread trucks, and we frequently have a very long line coming down Stafford Road to go through the gate. First of all, the construction would be a disruption for the gate access, and then it would be a continuing disruption for somebody coming and going from the easement that the Byers have. I can tell you that with the problem with traffic, that the developer has been very proactive, along with the association, to try to ease the traffic conditions, especially the speeding. A radar unit was purchased to try to remind homeowners and visitors how fast they're going. Our speed limit is posted at 25 miles an hour. However, I think I'm the only one that ever does that. We also had the streets designated as California Vehicle Code enforced, so that the sheriff can come in and control traffic and write tickets. And as I said, Stafford Road is the main entrance. We do have another entrance at Trentwood, which is the main entrance for the country club. We do have homeowners use that entrance, but for the most part, the majority of them use Stafford, because we have a lot of people that live on the south side of Lake Sherwood, and they all use Stafford, their guests use Stafford, their vendors use Stafford, and those homeowners that live more to the east of the property use that entrance. Right now, we have 264 homes in Sherwood behind the gates. We have another 125 in Old Sherwood, what we called Old Sherwood, which was the original community around the lake. And as I said, they access through the Stafford Gate. We have another 160 homes to be built behind the gate by the developer, and they will, most likely, most of them be using Stafford Gate because of the position of the lots. So about 80% of the traffic, maybe 85, comes through Stafford, and the other remaining through Trentwood, and those are passenger cars. We do not allow vendors to come through Trentwood. Stafford is designated as our service gate. The other issue I'd like to discuss with you is the decisions that a driver has to make when they turn off of Petrao. Traditionally, they're speeding on Petrao. We've had deaths on Petrao because of traffic problems and speeding. They turn on to Stafford, continue to speed. That particular area of the road, a driver is required to make some decisions very quickly, because they have to decide which lane to go in. If they have a transponder, they go in the transponder lane, or do they go in the visitors? I've had a lot of people say to me, "Well, I went the transponder lane because I didn't know. I don't know what a transponder is." We also have a large truck access, where we have those trucks that can't fit under the gate, the big iron gate, have to use the truck access. And then there are those that make the U-turn, because they come, they turn on to Stafford, they start down the lane, and they see that there's a line of traffic, so they make a U-turn so they can then go to Trentwood or get back in line later. So those are all... So those are all of the issues that face you with this kind of a decision, and, um, again, I'm just mostly concerned about the safety, um, of the residents and the visitors. That's, that's my main focus. And, um, um, and the inconvenience to the rest of the residents. They, I do frequently get complaints about how long it takes to get through Stafford Gate, and that's because we have such a long line a lot of the time, and we do have to access those people properly. We need to know who they are, we need to know that they have a valid driver's license, and, um, it, and we have to know where they're going. So it can take anywhere from a few seconds for someone coming to be accessed through the gate to I've sat in line sometimes for five, six minutes. So, um, it, it does present a problem. Any questions?
Ms. Stevenson, I have two questions real quick. Um, what you've brought up to me in my mind is two distinct situations. One is during construction where you have vehicles and trucks going in and out. Second is, uh, once the access is there, then it would be the use by the Byers or their guests and friends in and out. So I'm going to separate the two because obviously the truck and construction issue has a higher weight in my mind for what you just described. Has there been any discussions with the Byers regarding minimizing that access during the construction? Or any conversation? I don't see anything in the record here.
I have not had a conversation with them about that, no. I do believe that the developer has, and you can ask Mr. Comber about that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Secondarily, um, if, if the access is approved, given the normal homeowner traffic, based on what you've represented, um, there, there has to be a traffic study that the, the Buyer is going to pay for. Normal homeowner use is, is not of the volume that would cause me a concern for the left and right movements. Can you expound on that, or what's your experience been in there?
I'm not sure what you're asking me. I haven't had any experience of traffic coming off of, onto Stafford once, between Petrao and the gatehouse.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
Did I answer you?
No, you did, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have kind of a general question.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I just thought of something.
Surely.
Um, Stafford is completely private from Petrao into, onto the grounds?
Correct.
Behind the gate. Um, how many entrances access?
I, oh, I can't be totally accurate. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I can tell you that, um, the gatekeeper has to log in visitors, um, and at the Stafford Gate, we will have 10 pages of visitors, 30, 35 to a page. At Trentwood, we might have two for the day, and that would be, you know, a day when there's something going on at the club. We don't log in homeowners, and we don't log in people that have transponders, so it's kind of impossible to tell.
Where's, where's the other gate, nearest gate at?
Trentwood Drive is farther to the west.
In, as a crow flies, or as one would drive, how far removed from the Stafford Gate, is it?
I don't think it's even half a mile.
Okay. So it's just an issue of convenience that Stafford Gate is both the primary gate and the service gate?
It, we, it has been designated the service gate, and we do encourage homeowners to come to the Trentwood Gate and to have their visitors come through the Trentwood Gate, but practically speaking, they don't because the Stafford Gate is closer to their house. And I have, when people complain to me about waiting in line, I have suggested going to Trentwood, and I just say, "No, I'm not going to go all the way to Trentwood. This is faster."
Um, have speed bumps been considered?
On Stafford?
On the private road?
We have a couple of, uh, speed bumps on Stafford Road inside the gate.
What about outside the gate, where the problem appears to be?
Uh, no, we don't have any speed bumps there.
Might that resolve part of the problem with speeding coming off of Petrao?
Uh, possibly. I can't really say that it's solved any problems inside the gate either. It sometimes seems to be for the big SUV, the challenge to kind of take air.
Right, right, but your presentation kind of paints a visual perception that people are just coming off and off Petrao and quickly accelerating toward the gate, and certainly there, there's always liability with speed bumps, but it is a private road, and it does solve or address that particular problem.
The fire department, speaking with the firemen, have told me over the past that they really prefer not to have speed bumps because it does slow down the emergency vehicles. Um, you know, they'll work with them if they have to, but they would rather not have speed bumps.
Yeah, I've worked with the fire department before. I'm familiar with their preferences. Um, and that's, uh, you were, you were comments related to the, to the sheriff doing enforcement, to the sheriff doing enforcement of traffic, and somebody has purchased a speed gun? Who is that, is that?
We have a radar unit. It's a, it's a standalone radar unit that we place on the street around the property every day.
It's a stationary, stationary unit?
Uh, no, it's portable. We pull it out in the morning.
I see, I'm, it's on a trailer or something?
Yes, on a trailer.
Okay. Um, but Sherwood Security does absolutely no enforcement?
Security, it, we really don't consider it security. It's, it's, uh, observe and report. Try to stay away from the word "security" because it really is not a secure property. It's a gated community.
Okay. Um, you know the sheriff's primary responsibility is not to do traffic in the county, but rather the CHP?
Um, that's correct. I do have CHP come on property, and I do have sheriff come on property.
Okay. Thank you.
You maintain that Stafford Road is a private road?
Correct.
Private road. Could the homeowners association or Mr. Murdoch owns the road close to say, "We're going to close that road and provide another entrance that would be acceptable to fire and police," and just say, "We're going to close that entrance and close that road"? Is that possible?
I, maybe so. Um, I, I, I don't know the answer to that, maybe so. I know that the majority of our homeowners would be absolutely furious.
Yeah. And is there anything in your homeowners association or CCNRs that would permit you to say, "Uh, that's a private road, we don't want homeowners A, B, and C to use it"?
Um, actually, I don't believe so. I'm, you know, I'm not an attorney, so I don't believe so, but the section around the lake, the old section that we call Old Sherwood are not part of our association, and they're not bound by our CCNRs, except that. They do have to follow the rules for entrance into the property, so they do have to call in their guests, they do have to tell their guests they have to have a driver's license, and we treat them the same as we do ours. So we would have to tell everybody A, B, and C, so it would have to apply to both the old section and our association. If we were to say, "If you live on A, B, and C streets, you couldn't come through here," is that what you had in mind?
Yeah, thank you.
I have just one follow-up question. Um, this, this property in question, the Buyer's property, then, would or would not be governed by the CCNRs?
They are not. They are not part of Sherwood Valley Homeowners Association.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Stevenson.
Thank you for your time.
And you wish to have Mr. Comber speak?
Please.
Yes. Mr. Comber, please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Tom Comber. I work for Mr. Murdoch. I also work for Sherwood Development Company. I'm here this morning to represent Mr. Murdoch's desires with regards to his appeal. I've supplied the commissioners with a couple of documents that I would like to refer to and speak off of. The first document that I have supplied is the original county approval letter, uh, dated December 2nd, and on page two, I would like to draw your attention to item C, which reads the per-
Do you want me to just a minute, sir?
Sure.
Page two, paragraph C.
Yep.
Excellent. Again, this is the original approval letter for the Buyer's proposal, and in paragraph C, the approval letter indicates that the project would not be obnoxious or harmful or impair the utility of neighboring properties or uses. Prior to this finding, as well as after this finding, Mr. Murdoch supplied position statements indicating that indeed, from a, another resident of Ventura County, a private homeowner, that this improvement, if approved as it was submitted, would impair the neighboring property and the utility of the same. In item D, paragraph D, "The project, uh, would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. Although Stafford Road is a private street, the approximate 430 residents that have the right to use Stafford Road are a part of the general public. I don't believe that their rights have been protected accordingly." When we go further into the descriptor of the planning department's response and backup to paragraph D, we recognize that the statement reads, "The residential development would be subject to conditions of approval and ensuring compliance with water, septic drainage, and traffic." Being an individual developer on one of the hats that I wear, processing through the agencies, I have never been able to get an approval for an element that was accused of having a deleterious effect on an adjoining landowner without me as the applicant entering into discussions with the individual that had the perceived difficulty. I'm surprised that that was not a condition of this approval. I'm surprised that the county has adopted a statement as fact without being substantiated when there is an appellant indicating that the fact is indeed not 100% factual. That surprises me. It surprises me that the project wasn't conditioned to further protect the rights of the individuals that have legal access on Stafford, off of Petrao, into their homes, into the lake, into the country club. I don't believe, have I, I haven't seen, hasn't been brought to my attention, that there was any traffic study done on the traffic counts on Stafford to ensure that it's a safe location for the applicant to turn left out of, to turn right out of. I've not seen that. I don't believe it was required or requested, which is of me from private onto public or from public onto private when I process through these agencies. I don't believe that the line of sight has been addressed adequately, although we have discussed it in open public hearings. I don't believe that the applicant was ever required to ensure that his driveway accommodated the county of Ventura requirements for driveway access incorporating the line of sight. I don't believe that the site plan has been overlaid into the county plate that ensures safe access to and from either a public road or a private road, which, by the way, all of the private roads inside of Sherwood were mandated to comply with all of the county requirements as if it was a public road. I don't understand the difference between this particular application and the application of the county standards in the majority of the other situations that I've been fortunate enough to play with here in Ventura. Next sheet I'd like to draw your attention to is sheet three. This is the staff's response to the appellant's appeal. I'd like to draw your attention to page four. Specifically under Planning Division Response, the last sentence of that paragraph indicates that the county has not and cannot assign public access to the Byers over Stafford Road as claimed by the appellant. I believe that by designating this access road off of the back of the Buyer's property as a secondary access, that by the designation of sec- secondary access, it infers and allows the opportunity for the general public to utilize it, as in the primary access of the Buyer's property. The part of this equation that I don't understand, and Andrea, if I could inconvenience you, could I use your slide that shows the handheld there? If I can figure out how to work this, is backwards, right?
Yes.
The portion of this that I don't understand is as a secondary access, you know, actually, let me, let me be very clear with this. The little handle that you see extending out into Lake Sherwood has never been disputed from Mr. Murdoch Sherwood Development or Sherwood Valley HOA as being owned in fee by the Byers, that it absolutely is the Buyer's property. Title reports indicate so, tax assessors maps indicate so. Uh, prior to 1928, when the easement that was referenced by Mr. Zilinga was, was executed, the property, it's, the property that the Byers now own owns that land. We've never asserted they do not. Our assertion is that they don't have access rights over Stafford to enter this piece of their property. If we grant, if, if the county grants secondary access rights to the Buyer's property, the inference is that it can be used by servants, by food delivery folks, by anybody that that landowner doesn't want in their front door. I don't think that that's founded. I would recommend a revision to the, to the application, probably renaming that away from a secondary access into an access specifically designated for owner, owners, visitors, and emergency access. With that being said, I think that I would be in favor of an approval of the project with conditions, as we've asked for previously, and those conditions would simply be that the secondary access is not a secondary access, but indeed a designated access for the landowner's use, the landowner's house guests, and emergency purposes. I think with that being dead, done, agreed upon, uh, we could probably work through this appeal in a very short period. Can I answer any questions?
Excuse me, sir. You, what you're saying, of course, is you want construction on Petrao Road, obviously?
Correct.
Okay, and then, are we in the same situation where the applicant says he has access on Sherwood, and we're taking him at his word? It's the same issue we talked about earlier, the legal issue? Do we even get into that? Can we get into that?
The Buyer's application indicates that they have access on Petrao Road, that's, and I think that staff has validated that point.
Off of Petrao?
Maybe I'm not understanding your question, Commissioner Rostad.
No, Stafford Road.
Okay, you said, you said Petrao.
I'm sorry, well, yes, okay. Stafford Road's the question.
Right.
Our, our applicant is saying they have the right to use it. We're, we don't dispute that, is what you told me earlier, I assume.
Well, staff is not disputing that they have the right to access, given the information that they had before them when they issued their approval. That's, that's the position of the planning director, as I understand it.
Then this, the issue of whether or not the applicant has the right to use Stafford Road is, again, a civil matter.
Correct, and, and I believe that the Byers have presented information that they would like to address at, at this point in time, so I'm at a loss for, for giving you an answer to that question without having the full hearing before you. Maybe you might be better off just to hear all the evidence and then, and then come back to that question.
Sir, are you saying, representing the appellant, that we're construction to be confined to Petrao Road, and the changes for the second access, or you don't want to call it a secondary access, would be limited to, to the homeowner's guests and emergency vehicles? You would be satisfied?
I believe I would, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Duquesne?
What about the issue about the trash?
I believe that the Byers being reasonable people, that the Byers being a member of our community for a number of years, that the Byers recognizing that the majority lion share of their associates and friends are behind the gates, and that the HOA is only responding to the calls and comments that we get from the homeowners complaining about trash cans. I believe that the Byers and, and I, as Mr. Murdoch's representative, can work to an amenable resolve there. We have also-
Thank you.
Absolutely. Just by way of clarity, uh, Waste Management is the agency that picks up the trash in Sherwood. Uh, there is opportunity to go outside of the contract with Waste Management that Sherwood has signed, so there is opportunity for other usage of trash disposal. That's really kind of superfluous at this point. The point that I'm trying to make is that Waste Management is open and ready to discuss the designated trash pickup location. There are probably 100 residents on Petrao that Waste Management picks up for. This particular location in the previous CUP that Andrea mentioned, 1999 or whenever the heck it was, uh, Petrao Road was, the applicant that did the CUP and the grading permit was required to generate enough road space on Petrao in the previous CUP, when this also was discussed, by the way, a secondary access onto Stafford, and the planning department denied it. denied it. Has a designated left turn pocket. It is slightly wider than the balance of Pettero to facilitate acceleration out of the buyer's property into an easterly direction, which the dispatcher from Waste Management might feel is a safe location with which his employees can pick the trash up versus anywhere from, I don't know, six to 10 cans for the buyers. It's a large property, very beautiful, and the adjoining neighbor might be a better location for the trash company. Can I answer any further questions, Commissioner?
Would you please state once more what you would be willing to accept as conditions for the buyers to use that road?
I would prefer to see this application approved with the change in the access road that the buyers are proposing to Stafford from a secondary access to a private access for the homeowners, house guests, and emergency vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Comber.
I am curious about one question, as it relates to the existence of Stafford. When was that constructed?
Stafford Road?
Yes.
Probably 24, 23, 24 years ago?
So it would be post 1928?
Absolutely.
The alleged easement access was?
Surewood properties have changed hands twice since Elsa Canterbury entered into that 1928 agreement with Mathiason or Mathewson. Multiple homeowners, yes.
But the easements for the properties, easement goes with the property, it doesn't go with the property owner?
That's a correct statement. And even in 1928, they made sure to have appropriate legal verbiage that recorded against the property. So it's not a question, and we don't question that they have the right. And Stafford, actually, since the 1928 document, has changed shape a number of times. Stafford, where it currently joins Pettero, used to bend off to the right and join Lake Sherwood Drive, and that's not an issue. It's still covered under this original easement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Comber. Do we have any other speakers wish to speak in favor of the appeal? All right, then, I'm assuming the rest of these cards are opposition to the appeal. So I have a card from, we'd like to take about a five-minute break, please. Let's reconvene, really, in five minutes, according to that watch, about 17 minutes, too. Thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. At this time, I have three cards for speakers who oppose the appellant. So I don't know who would wish to speak first. Mr. Zilinga, would you wish to speak, or Mr. Byers, or Mr. Riley? Certainly. And please state your name and address.
My name is Todd Riley. I'm with the Architects Landry Design Group, designers of the project. We're at 11333 Iowa Avenue in Los Angeles. I believe, yeah, I have a few slides. What I'd like to do is just address a couple of basic questions and give you a quick overview of some of the issues that have been discussed today. Give me a moment. Okay. This is the exhibit that you've been looking at as part of the county presentation, the legalities of the roadway, the easement, the property. I'll let the other gentlemen in our party explain in more detail to you for clarification. This is an overview of the site plan as proposed and as approved by the zoning administrator. You can see, get the pointer to work. This is Pettero Road here. This is Stafford along here. This is the gate and access area in question. The project is designed to take, as we described it, primary access from Pettero Road. To address your question from earlier, Commissioner Adukas, that is, it is exactly what it means. The address will be 100 Pettero. Life safety, fire trucks will come to that address if there's a call to the property. Deliveries, the general and daily use in and out of the property would be the primary Pettero Road access. As designed, we go up this driveway to a central motor court, which, again, is sort of the focal point of the project. And then, excuse me, from that motor court down here to some underground parking, and then continuing down to the secondary gate, which is primarily for access across Stafford to the continuation of the buyer's property on the lake side of Stafford. Really, it's only intended, you know, general purpose and the reason the buyers would like to maintain the gate. Just for your information, this is the view of the project from the motor court that I just described, from up on the building pad. This would be a view of the project from the rear, just to give you an idea of the design and the look of what we're proposing. This slide represents a view from Stafford Road of the gate and fence in question. As you can see here, the driveway access has been designed to Ventura County roadway and access standards with sight lines and clearances taken into account. I believe that's addressed in the staff report for the original approval. In addition to the gate that you see here, and this man gate, as we call it, there is room and a provision for a trash enclosure, so that the cans that currently Waste Management says need to be picked up on Stafford could be stored and left behind a walled area out of public view. The buyers completely agree with the Sherwood residents that driving by a bunch of trash cans every day is not desirable, and they propose to improve that situation so that on a daily basis, this is what would be visible, not a bunch of trash cans like this.
Thanks for letting me interrupt. Yeah, what will be done about that? Because that's not the buyer's trash.
Well, that's, I just wanted to clarify, that is the neighbor's trash right now. And unfortunately, we can't speak for what the neighbor can and can't do, but I believe Mr. Byers is willing to discuss that issue with his neighbor and try to solve the problem globally rather than just for his sake.
Well, if you could go back to the planned view, then, does the neighbor that's behind this beautiful home also have access down that, the buyer's property?
No. This property line that runs here, sort of through these trees, this is a 30-foot strip of land that the buyers own, you know, out into the lake. There's an equivalent 30-foot strip right along here that accesses the neighbor's home.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Could I see the slide again with the gate on Stafford? Is that gate far enough inland so that a vehicle could pull in, the rear of the vehicle, like a station wagon or something?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Wouldn't be sticking out in the street?
It's a minimum of 25 feet from the curb line. Unfortunately, the renderings are dead-on realistic, so with the depth of this rendering, the house is hundreds of feet in the distance, so this 25-foot distance looks quite short in this view.
Thank you.
Let me just see if there were any other points I wanted to touch on.
Excuse me, one question.
I'm sorry.
As it relates to that rendering and Stafford Road. Is there any, I noticed Stafford in the previous presentation appears to be a two-lane road or splits off into a two-lane road as it approaches the gatehouse for the residents to access.
Yes.
Can you tell me specifically how far this gate is from that gatehouse? And secondarily, was there any sort of median? It actually exists as opposed to what your rendering shows?
I can't give you a specific distance from this access point to the median that's currently existing, but I can tell you this is accurate in that the median is farther down Stafford Road toward the Sherwood gates. And there was a photo, I don't think we, actually, let me see. We have a view, yeah, here we go. The view from up on the property looking down at Stafford that's currently on screen, this is where the buyer's property and where their proposed gate would be. So again, you can see there's some separation. I could not tell you what that physical distance is.
Where is the continuation of the buyer's property on the other side of Stafford?
This would be the 30-foot strip starting here and going this way, and then continuing through here.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Let's see. Stafford primary address. I think the other issue that I wanted to address that came up as part of the earlier testimony had to do with construction and construction traffic. Again, back to the issue of primary access, all construction vehicles during the life of the construction would access the property from Pettero. There will be some activity on Stafford to build, whether it's a fence or a wall or a gate, but we're not proposing to have trucks parked along Stafford or lots of equipment stored down there in any way. So the good news with this property is it's large enough that there will be onsite parking, you know, onsite equipment and material storage. Hopefully, we'll have, it should result in a minimum impact to the neighbors. And specifically along Stafford, there's no intention to use that as a construction access or storage area. I think the safety issues that have been raised, I'll let some other members of our party address as necessary. And with that said, I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Go ahead, Commissioner Adukas.
Have you had a chance to speak directly with Mr. Murdock's representation here about the activity and how you guys can come to an agreement? It sounded like there was a lot of respect offered to the buyers and understanding.
I believe Mr. Byers has been in several conversations with them. I have not been party to those conversations, but there has been an attempt by both parties, as I understand it, to come to some agreement.
Uh-huh. And, I don't know, perhaps that could be fleshed out a little bit more about what those activities are? That sounds really broad to me.
I'm sorry, I can't speak to them because I wasn't involved, but Mr. Byers certainly can when he speaks in a few moments, if you don't mind me deflecting that question.
Thanks very much.
Just one little detailed question. That strip of land that goes from Stafford Road down to Lake Sherwood, is there a road that goes down there? Is there a boat slip down there or something?
There's not currently.
There's no current development?
Right.
Down to the lake?
There is not. As part of a future proposal or future development, there may be the opportunity for a parking area and access to the lake. Just for clarification, this site plan exhibit did not include, the approval did not include this section over here. We weren't seeking to muddy the water, so to speak, by getting involved with the lake and issues that would be beyond the proposed development. But this is sort of a future concept of what could be done.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you very much.
I did have one question, Mr. Riley. If you could back up one slide. The slide, I guess, the gate?
The gate, okay.
Or across, looking across from the gate towards that?
That's from, or looking at the rendering of the gate?
Oh, yeah, that's the one. I'm just trying to see what the road looks like and where the improved median is at. And the unimproved median continues apparently northward.
Right, that's through this area, yes.
Yeah. And the road is certified for vehicle code enforcement, or do you, I think I heard someone say that.
I believe one of the appellant's representatives was talking about your sheriff and CHP involvement on that road, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you very much.
I have a card from Mr. Byers and Mr. Zilinga. Who would wish to speak first?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Richard Zilinga. I'm legal counsel for Mr. Byers and his wife. My address is 2815 Townsgate Road in Westlake Village, California. The sole issue in the appeal that's been presented is with respect to the driveway or what's been referred to as the secondary access. Nothing with respect to any other part of the project has been challenged in the appeal. And there are a few issues that have been raised. The first issue is the issue of the ownership of the land, the 30-foot strip across Stafford Drive that connects the two parts of the buyer's property. With respect to that, as you know, we submitted a letter yesterday after doing our homework on what the history was with the 1928 easement, and you now have that in front of you. And that letter demonstrated, with evidence attached, that the buyers own, it's not an easement, they own that 30-foot strip across Stafford Drive. And as has been indicated by staff, there's been no rebuttal evidence presented with respect to that at all. I very much appreciated Mr. Comber, who spoke with you on behalf of appellant earlier, saying that the appellant has never challenged Mr. Byers' ownership of that property. Of course, we know from the letter that was submitted by Mr. Murdock that he said he owned the whole thing. So in fact, until today, they have been saying that Mr. Byers had no right to that, use that strip across Stafford Road because it was owned by Mr. Murdock or Sherwood Development Company. So I think we've come a long way on the ownership issue, and I think we can probably set that one aside, that Mr. Byers owns that property and has a right, as is indicated in the 1928 easement, to the predecessors of Sherwood Development Company, he reserved the right to use it for all purposes, which would, of course, include access. I'm not quite sure the distinction Mr. Comber was trying to make about whether he has access or not, but he reserved the right to have access and use of that property to go to the other part, which is at the lake. The safety issue is the second issue. And it's a bit of a peculiar claim on behalf of Sherwood Development Company or its HOA. I believe it still controls the homeowners association there, so it's kind of the same voice. But anyway, it's a bit of a peculiar claim because, as you see on the slide in front of you, Sherwood Development Company has a driveway right there. That is their construction access driveway that they called temporary and have been using, I mean, I lived there at Sherwood, I've seen it for at least the last seven, eight years, so it's been there quite some time. They told you today in this hearing that they have 160 more homes to build, so you know it's going to be there a lot longer. So if it really is such a terrible safety problem and a hazard, one wonders why their construction access driveway is right there, even closer to the gates than they're talking about with respect to Mr. Byers' driveway. And interestingly, from the safety perspective, we know that we have gates here that you approach when you're coming into Sherwood Country Club. So the cars are coming along here, when they come off of Pettero, and they're slowing because those gates are down. When someone is exiting on the other side, leaving Sherwood Country Club, they're not leaving and coming up to any gates. So if anything, the speeding problem would be worse with respect to Sherwood's construction driveway, not with respect to Mr. Byers' driveway, where anybody coming by there has those gates that they're slowing down to. Now, the representative of the HOA, Ms. Stevens, Stevenson, told you that speeding is a terrible problem at Sherwood, and that they've had a speed machine out there recording people going over 25 miles per hour. She wasn't real specific about where that problem is. In fact, until a couple days ago, Sherwood had never put that speed regulator in this area. It had always been inside the Sherwood loop, where people, when they get past the gate, do accelerate and go more than 25 miles per hour past all those homes in there. And that's where the speed machine has been. With respect to this area, as I said, we have a gate which slows them down. So it's important, when you hear from the HOA representative, we have this terrible speeding problem, that we're specific about where it is, and it isn't right here, because they're slowing down as they go by this median and as they get to the gate. On one side, they stop in the guard and check in. On the other side, the right side here, the gate is down until they get there, and you have to be right up against the gate for your transponder to lift the gate. So it's not like it's open and they can speed through there. So I think that addresses the speeding question. And obviously, Waste Management believes, because they've insisted that the garbage cans be down in this area here, that it's slower with respect to traffic than it is out on Pettero. And so they view it as a safer spot to stop and pick up trash. And of course, the staff report that you have in front of you on page seven concurs with us on the traffic and the safety issue on this point. On aesthetics, I think the architect has very properly addressed that. You can see what the current condition is, which is unfortunate that the neighbor doesn't have a drive there and hauls their trash down a redded, ungraded area and puts their trash cans out there. Mr. Byers, as shown in his proposal, is going to have his cans shielded, and so it will certainly look better with respect to his cans than it does now with respect to the neighbor. Now, I think construction delays have been addressed because we've agreed that all construction traffic can come off of Pettero. And I guess the only other point I would make is that with respect to Mr. Comber's comments at the end, I'm going to assume, and I suppose you all might want to verify, that when he says what they can live with, he's speaking on behalf of Mr. Murdock and Sherwood Development Company, and we're not going to have some challenge later-- Sherwood Development Company, and we're not going to have some challenge later if this commission says, "Okay, we're going to impose some of these conditions as part of this approval." With respect to those conditions, I can represent, and Mr. Byers will confirm when he stands up here very briefly, that Mr. Byers has no problem with that secondary drive, or whatever we're going to call it, being for the use of his family and his guests and for emergency purposes, and that the primary drive off Potrero could be for deliveries and other normal day-to-day activities. So, you know, I think a letter could have been submitted to that effect from Sherwood Development Company. We probably wouldn't have needed to spend all this time. But here we are, and I think there is a basis for an agreement. Obviously, you guys can't negotiate that agreement here, but you can certainly do an approval that reflects those. And if the appellant has said that they're satisfied with those, I think that ends the matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Zillinger. Mr. Byers.
I'm Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Bob Byers, Jr., and at 2658 Ladbrook Way, inside the gates of Sherwood currently. Obviously, just very quickly, it is our property, and Sherwood has an easement across it, which is part of that 1928, and we have the ability to use still our property for any purpose according to that easement. What we're proposing is a much purtier drive than certainly the one you see across the way where my wife's car is sitting at the moment. And we're proposing to make it much more appropriate, if you will, for an entrance to Lake Sherwood. And quite frankly, for just as part of the property, which I think our architect's done a great job on. I don't want a gravel road down there like we see across the street there. I don't want a dirt road down there if I have to take my trashcans in the rain. The reality is, is that I want it easy to get those cans down there. I'm a little lazy that way. And I don't want them sitting out. I would hide them. That's why the rendering that you see doesn't show garbage cans. It's not as a ploy. It's that I don't want them there. Most of my friends do live behind the gates and do drive down inside that gate, and certainly I want to be a good neighbor. And I want it to look, I wish theirs looked better. But that said, realistically, from a safety standpoint, as Rick mentioned, they have put a speed monitor outside the gate, about where the curb is, if you can see to the left, which you can't. There's a curb. I got a great line of sight for any car coming. I sat there for about a half an hour yesterday watching the monitor, took video of it, too. Unfortunately, because of the sun, it's really hard to see the numbers. But what actually happens is, is that cars come in there. The highest I saw in that half an hour was 29 miles an hour, but by the time they got to where that monitor was, which is just before the curb, he was down to 19 because you've got a curve coming. Then you've got the transponder lane you've got to make a decision on, or the gate. So, the traffic actually is coming in there faster than the 25 mile an hour, but then is very quickly slowing as you come around that curve. And I've got a couple hundred feet line of sight there. Coming out of the -- interestingly, the transponder, or transponder, the machine, okay, the laser, also picks up cars leaving the gate. So, I don't know if it differentiates which way you're going, but I did notice that as you leave, it went just the opposite. People were at 25, 30, 35, 40, and it was accelerating as you went past that area. The reality is, is that we do have good line of sight, so that's not an issue. I don't think the speed on a normal circumstance average is an issue. If somebody thinks they can make the curve at 100 miles an hour, I got a problem. There's no question about it, and they have one coming out of the gate. I don't think the increased number of people with the two of us in the house is going to be a real problem. Obviously, there are 100 more homes to be built or whatever inside Sherwood. They're all going to have service people. They're all going to have guests. They're all going to have those same things. And so, I just don't see that as a real safety issue. Have no problem with the primary access being for construction. Makes a lot of -- wouldn't have done it any other way anyway. Makes no sense to try to come in the back. That long line you see is at 7:00 in the morning, and it's gone then within an hour because they can't get in before 7:00. So, I need, I do eventually plan to have a dock there, and obviously, I'll be back, you know, to the planning commission to do that at that time. I need to have access to it. And I'm certainly sure that the intent in 1928, when they gave that easement and said for any purpose was, "Got to be able to get to my lake property because there's no other way to get there except by boat." So, I'm happy to answer, you know, any questions you have. I think that council and the architects have pretty well laid everything out, and so I'll be happy to answer questions.
Commissioner Dukas?
When do you plan to break ground?
Soon as we can get the appeal dropped.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Byers.
Thank you. Can I have one more thing?
Certainly.
Based on Mr. Comber's statement of what was an acceptable condition and what he said, I don't have a problem with it. So, if, I mean, if we can move forward on that basis and he can make that decision for Mr. Murdoch, it's a done deal as far as I'm concerned. I don't have any objections to it.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. At this point, we would have a rebuttal by the appellant if he wishes to make an rebuttal. Mr. Comber? No rebuttal? All right. Oh. Again, state your name and address.
My name is Tom Comber. I work for Mr. Murdoch. It's not necessarily a rebuttal, but a clarification. The sec, the access gate that Mr. Byers is referencing by the fact that his wife's car is sitting on it is simply constructed to accommodate vehicles by design that are too large to get through the access gates. The secondary gates are locked with the chain link. It's not accessible to the public. It's not accessible to Sherwood Country Club members, to our residents, to Lake Sherwood Community Association residents. Does it get used on occasion other than that? Probably. By design, the function of that access road is so we don't tear the top of the wrought iron gates out when a crane comes through the road. I want to thank you for giving consideration to our appeal.
Excuse me, sir. I have a question for you, sir. Do you represent Mr. Murdoch or Mr. Murdoch and the homeowners association?
I do not have a direct link to the homeowners association other than I am a part of the senior management team with Sherwood Development Company, who has board positions on Sherwood Valley HOA.
So, the answer is you do not represent the homeowners association?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I had one.
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez.
So, that service road is really, although defined as temporary, it's really a pretty permanent, long-term temporary road.
To answer your question.
And neither the fact that there's future construction on the drawing board.
Yes, it is. It's temporary, designed to be temporary. Sherwood's been developing for 23 years. We probably have another 15 years till build out. And until the county tells us we can't use that road, it would be our expectation that for safety purposes, we would continue to use that road.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, the staff wish to make any closing comments. Andrea?
Just a couple of quick items that I wanted to bring up. Condition 43 of the project is a fire department condition requiring 20 feet for entry and exit gates on either side so that there would be sufficient staging area for cars. And also, we have a code section in the non-coastal zoning ordinance which also speaks to that effect, that a fence would need to be backed 20 feet. And I spoke during the break with the buyers and asked them if a condition similar to what we have in the coastal zone on areas like Ocean Drive where there's really not a lot of room for construction, if they would be open to a condition on there saying that they could only, or that they would have to have the road be passable at all times. And they were open to that. So, we would be, we'd be able to modify the conditions to include that if you wished. And that was all that I had.
Questions?
Yes. I raised the issue about what's the primary construction entrance, specifically, and I thank you very much for addressing that because the construction condition 26, as far as the trucks and egress and egress. So, I am assuming, and you all know what happens when you assume, is that staff is able to craft the language that would fit that into the conditioning.
And you said number 26?
Well, 26 has to do with the hours of debris removal, things like that. Overall, what would be the appropriate condition to ensure that they would limit it to the primary access off Potrero for construction, except for like you described in the actual gate? What I'm saying is, I'm looking forward to staff to craft that language.
Okay, okay.
Okay, whether it's in the 26 or one of the others.
So, modify condition number 26.
Right, that it specifically states that the applicant agrees to use the Potrero as the primary construction access.
Okay.
Commissioner Rodriguez and then Commissioner Dukas.
Yes, Andrea. You stated 20 feet clearance, or however you stated. I think I heard the architect, Mr. Riley, say that the intended is to have a 29-foot setback on that gate.
I heard him say 25, but the requirement...
Can we get a clarification? And 25?
It was designed at 25. It's at a slight angle, so it varies between 25 and 30.
Okay. Okay. So, even though it's beyond the requirement, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dukas?
Regarding the enclosure for the trashcans and the, could that be crafted with staff as well, working with the applicant? You know, it sounded, it sounded pretty clear to me that he doesn't plan to leave, you know, the back of his property look any different than the front or inside, but it'd be nice to have it in writing anyway.
Okay, so to add the condition saying that the trash will be in an enclosure behind the gate?
What the architect assured us would occur.
Okay.
That way, the problems that Mr. Murdoch stated, that he didn't like, you know, those trashcans on the way to going into Sherwood, you know, wouldn't be a detriment, obnoxious. Yeah.
We can add that condition.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Andrea?
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing, and I'd like to be certain that we've introduced the exhibits.
A, B, and C and 22, Mr. Chairman, I believe is what we can give.
I can always count on you, Commissioner Westner.
You told me that's my job.
It's nice to have attorney on both sides. This is the time when we deliberate, discuss, and come to some decision. What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
I'd like to move the recommended actions.
I'll second that if that includes the additional conditions that we discussed with staff.
Yes.
By the additional conditions, you mean the ones that I asked to be clarified about the gate only be used for those particular things?
Can someone please specify what we can...
Yes.
I guess, okay, to, and also to include appropriate conditions with regard to the use of the back gate be confined, and that all construction activity will access the project through Potrero, that the activities that will occur on that, on that gate will be the ones that are necessary for construction of the gate and the fencing and whatnot, and then the use of that would be for guests, the property owners, guests, and emergency personnel to use that gate. And inclusion of conditions regarding trash barrel enclosures or screening devices. And I think that covered it.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioners.
Yes, I'd like to discuss it. Based on what everything I've seen before me, I would just move staff recommendation. It's just common sense that they're going to use Potrero Road, and as to these other issues regarding the back gate, I see no reason to condition them. Basically, we have an agreement between the appellants, and had the property owners association representative not left, we might have had a stipulation. But as it stands, I don't see any reason to do anything more than adopt a staff recommendation without amendments.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, Commissioner Westner.
I understand what Steve's talking about, but having been up here enough times, and I know when all of a sudden the dirt trucks start stacking up during construction, Nuga sites at 7:00 in the morning or 6:30. It just, it does become an issue, particularly as the primary construction gate, I can see that this would be a real issue on Stafford. And not that anybody would do it deliberately if somebody said, unless somebody says, "No, you can't do it," I can at some point see the dump trucks stacking up. And we've been through that before, so that's kind of the reason I was pushing that.
Well, I'm prepared to give away on that issue, but I still don't see the reason for imposing conditions on this other access personally.
We have a motion and a second. We've had discussions. Is there any other discussion on the motion and the second?
Commissioner Moltar, if I may?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification. I understand that the condition to be added on the construction-related, I understand the condition to be added as far as the trash enclosures go, but adding a condition that conditions in a pub, an access easement to be more than, I understand that the condition, I understand what Onstot is saying by perhaps this is a private agreement, having this in a conditional use permit, which is a conditional use permit for grading and building and scenic resource protection, that forevermore, the county would be responsible to enforce guests of Mr. Byers, and if somebody called a complaint against this condition, that the county would be obligated to go out and ensure only guests were on that easement.
Then perhaps I should withdraw the motion and then re, make another motion to move the recommended actions, but instead of having this problem, can we massage the construction condition and the trash as before? And that would cure that problem?
Absolutely.
Okay, may I, may I do that, please? Make that motion, then?
And I'll amend the second.
Okay. Would you please state that once more, Commissioner Dukas, what your motion is?
Well, I've withdrawn the first one and instead moved the recommended actions to deny the appeal, however, impose two modifications to the existing approvals. One having to do with construction being, all construction will access the project through Potrero Road. And second, that the architect's assurances regarding the trash enclosure will just be, you know, put into the condition of approval.
Second on that. Any other discussion? Commissioner Onstot, does that meet some of your concerns?
Sound, but not all.
Okay.
Okay, my only discussion then was we've had representation from both Mr. Byers' councils, architect, Mr. Byers, and the appellant, that there is going to be a private agreement as far as how that private access will be used. And that's why I'm feeling comfortable to move forward with the vote.
Thank you so much for the level of discourse between all the parties. It's refreshing.
I have one comment.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm comfortable with everything as we're proposing going forward. We didn't get any testimony from any sort of traffic engineer, traffic engineer study, yet safety was an issue, was talked about extensively. And my only issue is, maybe a potential issue if it relates to exit from the country club by the buyers in accessing their property through that rear gate as the road appears to be identified. That's an issue that's not before, that's something that might be subject to signage or something at some point in time if it becomes a safety issue.
Well, this is a de novo hearing, so you can raise it.
Well, as I, I don't, there's no traffic, there's no traffic evidence that's been promoted or submitted by a traffic engineer. There appears to, there's clearly a solid median separating ingress and egress, but there's, appears to be an extension medium of some type. of some type. And exit from Sherwood by, in this case, the Byers, appears, and I only say that because of what I'm seeing, appears that it crosses over a median, and there will have to be some sort of modification to allow that to occur. There's no problem, obviously, exiting the property and turning right into Sherwood Country Club, the potential problem, and again, it's only a perceived problem because there's no traffic evidence to show otherwise.
Are we just talking about the property owners returning from the country club and using the back gate?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of any other place where a sign needs to be posted for a single property owner. If there's a median, they're not allowed to go that way.
That's an essence.
That's it.
That's an essence of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If the roadway's been constructed and...
Well, that's just common sense. I mean, the median is there, they're not going to be able to...
Having been, having had the experience in the arena of public safety, common sense and logic and what actually occurs don't always come in the same, so that's just, there's a median there. Okay.
All right, are we... Any other discussion or any other comments? If not, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion?
Could we restate the motion, please, and the conditions?
Yes.
The motion is to move the recommended actions with two changes, one change and one addition to conditions, the change having to do with construction, all construction will access the project off Portero Road, and second, that the trash enclosure and screening will be provided as per the architect's testimony.
Must you state in your motion that you recommend we deny the appeal as well as approve?
Yes. Yes, that's the recommended action, to deny the appeal, however, to, on the fourth, that the finding is subject to the conditions of approval, we're making a modification to one of those conditions, and something that actually says as a condition of approval that there's going to be trash barrel screening.
Thank you. Second?
That's the word, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Four ayes and one opposed. Motion carried. Let's take about a five-minute break.
Oh, just a minute.
Yes.
Just because I respect our new members, he's a lawyer, so I imagine that there is something that to this layperson I could benefit from, from hearing for your reasons, for saying that.
I just don't think under the terms of the permit and the process, we need to be conditioning his trash receptacle. Yes?
I kind of agree with the trash receptacle thing. I think that's not an issue, but we made the motion and passed it.
I understand.
Thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break till we get on to the next item. Thank you for your cooperation, for your presentations.
Yes, she's here. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Ms. Rodriguez, do you need more time?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. The next item is item six on the agenda. I'll see if I can get the sequence right. Jeffrey, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the name. Is it Solsrum Appellant?
Yostrum.
Yostrum, Yostrum, okay. All right, we'll start with the presentation of the staff report.
Good morning, Commissioner and Chair members of the Commission. Just for the record, my name is Dan Clemon. I will be presenting the staff's recommendation on this appeal. Maybe I won't. Excuse me. Just some background information. The appeal involves a project site that's located in the Tierra-Rahada Valley. The project site doesn't have a street address. It fronts Tierra-Rahada Road. It's adjacent to the city of Simi Valley. It's within the City of Moore Park's area of interest. It's within the Tierra-Rahada Green Belt area. And the property has a land use designation of open space and a zoning designation of open space, 40-acre minimum lot size. There's an extensive history to this appeal, and it's all relevant to this decision that's before you today. So I wanted to briefly go through and highlight the key events. All these are spelled out in more detail in the staff report. But the story begins in 2008 when Cornerstone Community Church submitted an application for a CUP for a church, a Bible college, and warehouse distribution facilities to be used by the Children's Hunger Fund, which is a nonprofit organization which distributes goods and offers services to needy children around the world. Churches and the facilities that would have housed the Children's Hunger Fund are not permissible uses in the open space zone. However, Cornerstone Community Church was relying upon the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, or ARLUPA as the acronym goes, to compel the county to consider the application. That is just process it. And their argument was that there are other uses that are similar in nature to the church and the Children's Hunger Fund facilities, which are allowed in the open space zone. And due to the equal protection clause of ARLUPA, the county was also compelled to offer the same sort of consideration of the uses that they were proposing on that site. Due to the precedent-setting nature of this decision, the planning director deferred to your commission the decision on whether or not to process the CUP. And your commission conducted a hearing and decided not to allow the processing of the application, mainly due mainly to the fact that these uses aren't allowed in the open space zone, and there are other opportunities to have those uses considered in the open space zone, namely through ordinance tax amendments. Cornerstone appealed that decision to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors conducted two hearings. After receiving extensive legal counsel on this issue and conducting the hearings, the board made a decision, and their decision was to allow processing of the application for the church pursuant to the ARLUPA argument that was presented to them and the federal preemption clause of the zoning ordinance. However, the Board of Supervisors denied processing of the application for the Children's Hunger Fund due to the fact that they did not believe that Cornerstone presented a convincing argument that there are other uses that are similar to the Children's Hunger Fund warehouse facilities that were proposed that have been allowed or could be allowed in the open space. After that decision, and as part of a totally separate action, the Board of Supervisors adopted two urgency ordinances that established a moratorium on new assembly uses in the open space zone. And more specifically, the moratorium did not allow the issuance or approval of any entitlements that would allow assembly uses in the open space zone for approximately a one-year timeframe. And during this time, as you learned last month at the presentation regarding the zoning ordinance text amendments involving assembly uses in the open space zone, the board directed the planning division to go back and consider a number of ordinance text amendments in order to carve out those uses that have been allowed in the open space zone but are inconsistent with the purposes and objectives of the open space zone. Moratorium expires in March, and your decision on the ordinance text amendments will be presented to the Board of Supervisors on March 2. One other key point for this appeal I should add is that the ordinance 4402, which is the ordinance that is currently in effect, states that the moratorium on approvals of new assembly uses in the open space zone does not apply to applications that were submitted prior to March 25, 2009, which is the case for the Cornerstone application now, Discovery, which is before you. Okay, back to the conditional use permit application. In September, Cornerstone contacted us and requested an extension to submit the materials that they're required to submit in order to complete their application and to revise the project description such that it was consistent with the board's decision. After the extension was granted, Cornerstone contacted us again and indicated that Discovery Church had entered into an option to purchase the property, and Discovery Church would like to take over the CUP application primarily just for a church at this point in time. And staff considered what they were proposing and what they were requesting, and we recommended to them that in order to approve this change in applicant, two things must occur. One is what they're proposing at this point in time must be in keeping with the Board of Supervisors' decision, and number two, their proposed project cannot differ greatly from what Cornerstone was proposing, namely can't propose any new uses or development, which was greater, more intense than what Cornerstone was proposing at that point in time. So Discovery submitted a conceptual site plan to us and statistics that compared what they were considering at this point in time in comparison to what Cornerstone had proposed. The proposal was roughly equivalent in terms of the size and scale of the church that was proposed by Cornerstone, and as such, the planning director authorized the change in applicant and continued processing of the CUP application. Now, planning director's decision was based upon a number of factors. One is there's no law that prohibits changes in applicants for entitlements that are in process. Number two, the Planning Division Policy and Procedures Manual, it's silent on this issue. Number three is that the decision was based upon the land use law principle that entitlements run with the land. Entitlements are not issued to a person who can then take the entitlements to another piece of property and enjoy the privileges of that entitlement. It only applies to that piece of property. Ownership changes, and the new owner operates in accordance with the conditions of that entitlement, they're allowed to continue to do so. So based upon these reasons, and I should also add the fact that almost all jurisdictions, indeed, we surveyed jurisdictions up and down the coast, we've spoken with other jurisdictions about whether or not they also allow changes in applicant for entitlements, almost unanimously they all allow that. So based upon these reasons, planning director allowed for the change in applicant, and an appeal was filed of that decision. So primarily, two main arguments to the appeal. The first is that in allowing the change in the applicant and the continued processing of this application, the appellant is arguing that this decision violated the terms of the urgency ordinance, and more specifically, the moratorium on the issuance of entitlements for assembly uses in the open space zone. And in doing that, the argument is that if the change in applicant was not allowed, then a new application would be required, a new application then would be subject to the moratorium that's currently in effect. However, we believe that this is a misreading of the ordinance. I mean, as you can see in the slide, just quoting straight from the ordinance, it says that "No permit, zoning clearance, or other county approval shall be issued for the development of any and all new assembly uses within the open space zone." The planning director's decision to allow the continued processing of this application is not an approval or an issuance of the CUP. Therefore, planning director's decision was not in violation of urgency ordinance 4402. The second argument by the appellant relies upon a section of the noncoastal zoning ordinance. And if you read that section, what it says is that "When there's a conflict between regulations within the noncoastal zoning ordinance, the regulation that is more restrictive and more protective of natural resources shall govern." The appellant is arguing that urgency ordinance number 4402 and the moratorium established is more protective than the regulations that are provided in the noncoastal zoning ordinance when it comes to open space resources. Therefore, the moratorium and the urgency ordinance shall prevail. However, once again, this is a misreading of the code because urgency ordinance number 4402, it's not a part of the noncoastal zoning ordinance. That's adopted as an entirely separate ordinance. We verified this with the clerk of the board. Therefore, there is no conflict between regulations within the noncoastal zoning ordinance, and the section on which the appellant is relying in order to make the argument doesn't apply to this case. So the planning director did not act in violation of the zoning ordinance. There was another issue that came up that was not specifically addressed in the staff report, but it is in the appeal. The appellant believes that he's been treated in a discriminatory fashion based upon the fact that in order to process the appeal, we charge a fee to do so. However, pursuant to the Coastal Act, we are not allowed to collect fees to process appeals for projects that are within the appeals jurisdiction. The appellant is arguing that because there's this exception for fees for those sorts of appeals within that area, that does not apply throughout the rest of the county. The fact that we charge a fee for the processing of the appeal is treating the appellant in a discriminatory fashion. I'm not an attorney. I'm not going to go into the discriminatory argument. However, I strongly encourage you to consult county council if you have any questions about this argument. So based upon the information in the staff report and the exhibits that have been presented to you and in this presentation, we recommend that you adopt a resolution denying the appeal. You uphold the planning director's decision to allow a change in applicant for the CUP application and designate the Resource Management Agency and the planning director as the custodian of the record of proceedings. That concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer whatever questions you might have.
Before, we'd like to have our disclosures. Commissioner Duquesne?
The only disclosure I have is that I've read, I guess, an article or two and maybe a letter or two that's in the papers.
Commissioner, also?
No disclosures. I also read some articles in the paper, and I called Dan this week, and I had some questions that weren't necessarily specific about the appeal, but things like I'm going to ask later about what is a church and things like that, which do not affect the appeal but will affect the CUP if it comes in from Discovery, from Discovery Church.
I have no ex parte communications.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I have no declarations.
All right. Any questions for Dan? Yes, Commissioner Duquesne?
You had said that one of the grounds for the appeal had to do with the moratorium either not being in the noncoastal zoning ordinance or it being in the noncoastal. Can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
There's a fine point there that...
Yeah, to clarify, the argument is that the fact, excuse me, I think, actually, could you repeat your question again, please?
Could you explain this again?
The second point for the grounds of appeal or the discriminatory accusation?
Not the discriminatory, this one.
Yeah, this one is, kind of relies upon a nuanced section of the zoning ordinance to explain. Once again, in the noncoastal zoning ordinance, there's a regulation that states when there's a conflict between regulations within the noncoastal zoning ordinance, whichever regulation is more restrictive or more protective of natural resources shall govern. However, in this, the argument is that the moratorium established by ordinance number 4402 is more restrictive than the regulations that you find within the noncoastal zoning ordinance. Therefore, the urgency ordinance number 4402 and that moratorium should apply in the planning director's decision, not only in violation of urgency ordinance, but also that section of the noncoastal zoning ordinance. However, the urgency ordinance is not a part of the noncoastal zoning ordinance. It's a separate regulation that's adopted separately from the noncoastal zoning ordinance regulations. So in other words, it's not within the noncoastal zoning ordinance, so there's no conflict of regulations within the noncoastal zoning ordinance. In other words, this section of the noncoastal zoning ordinance doesn't even apply in this situation. Make sense?
I'm trying to catch up with that and get my mind around that. So say that there was another moratorium, say, on some other sort of land use. It would not be part of the coastal or the noncoastal zoning ordinance. It's something separate and apart. Any moratorium is separate and apart than the existing, we've got two zoning ordinances. One's coastal, one's noncoastal. So moratoriums that cover any sort of land use at all are not part of either one of those? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They're adopted as separate ordinances, and they're subject to a separate section of the government code that has very specific requirements as to how you can adopt an urgency ordinance and establish a moratorium, such as what occurred in this sort of situation. It doesn't become part of the noncoastal zoning ordinance. It's temporary in nature, and it's adopted as a different part of the county code, so...
Okay. And then, could you go back to the part where you were talking about the development being more intense, the size, the scale of the church was the same?
Yeah, basically, our decision was based upon the fact that, well, whenever you're looking at a change in applicant, and if there's going to be a change in the project description, in this case, what we were looking at was two things. One, that the change was consistent with the board's decision regarding particularly the Children's Hunger Fund, because the board did allow the processing of a CUP application for the church. Discovery is proposing a church at this point in time, so then what we were looking at. Second was that the church that they're proposing is similar to what was being proposed by Cornerstone. If it was the same or lesser in terms of its size, scale, intensity, development, then we would consider, yes, in keeping with the general project description that was previously considered, and we'll continue the processing of that.
Okay, this is where I have a difference of opinion, because from what I have read, what's being proposed is vastly different than what was proposed to us when we first heard from Cornerstone. That Cornerstone was going to be an amphitheater, it was going to be outside, it would be soccer field, so it was going to have all sorts of amenities for the general public, not just for the membership and the church. And what I've read in the paper is that there's going to be, like, paved parking lots and an enclosed sanctuary, that it is quite different in scale and size.
It's true that some of the characteristics are different. However, in terms of the intensity of use, the congregation size, the types of uses that are proposed, we felt that it was generally in keeping with what was previously considered.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Malter?
Commissioner Malter?
Yes.
Through the chair. Just for the purpose of clarity on the record, Commissioner Duquesne referred to things that she had read. Could you indicate which paper you read it from and basically the time period in which you read these, so that the people who are involved in this appeal know exactly what you're referring to?
Yeah, this is just general information that would be available to anybody who reads either the Ventura County Star over the past year, any of the Acorn papers. There's, I don't know how many different versions there are of them. There's Simi Valley Acorn, Thousand Oaks Acorn, Moore Park Acorn. There's at least six that I can think of. And I think, I don't believe that the LA Times, but I read a ridiculous number of papers over the last year.
I received the LA Times and the Ventura Star, and I believe there's an article in the Star. It was just very general about the switch and so forth. I don't remember anything specific about it except that there was a comment.
And to clarify, if you take a look at exhibit four, it consists of the planning director's determination to allow the change in applicant. If you go to an attachment to that letter, you'll see a comparison in the sizes between what Discovery and Cornerstone are proposing. And if you compare the figures, especially in terms of, for example, the building statistics on gross square footage, they're roughly the same. And you'll see that Discovery is not proposing anything that Cornerstone was not previously proposing as a part of their application.
Dan, would you go back to the slide that states the reasons for the planning director's? So there's no state law saying that prohibits a change, so I'm assuming you can't. And the planning director's policies is, historically relied upon the land use. Now, I have a question for county council. Whenever we get into these issues about a variance, especially in an area where someone comes in and says, "I want a variance for height," and we approve the variance, and the questions always ask, "Does this set a precedent? Can someone else come in and say, 'You approved a variance for so-and-so, you have to approve mine.'" If I remember, county council has told us that there really isn't a precedent. Each case is looked upon individually. Now, is that the case here? In other words, I know in the past, the similar uses have been approved, but is this a precedent? Have the past approvals by the planning director on these uses, if they're similar, using the same application, is this a definite precedent setting in this case?
I'm just trying to understand the question. What is precedent setting here? You refer to variance situations in the past. I don't think that that's an apposite comparison, because variance findings are very specific as set forth in state law as well as in the coastal zoning ordinance, or the noncoastal zoning ordinance, and I'd just like to set that aside. What's presented with you here is basically the reasons why the planning director took the decision that she did, and it is based upon, as it's clearly stated there, historical practice of recognizing these changes in CUP applicants. So the precedent nature, are you referring to, are you setting a precedent by this decision now?
I'm asking that the planning director's reason for approving this transfer of permit application is based upon past practice. And I'm saying, is that past practice precedent setting on the decision that she made on approving or denying this application?
She's following her practice. That's the best way I can explain it to you.
Thank you.
And to clarify, it was not an approval or denial of the application, it was just a decision to allow the continued processing of the application. Subtle, yet very important for what's before you right now.
Well, but yes, I know it's not approval or denial, but it's a practice of letting an application move from one applicant to another without filing a new application. That's, yes, I understand that distinction. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Dan. At this time, I would like to hear from the appellant, the appellant's representatives. I have four cards. I have two comment cards in support of the recommended action, and I have a card from Gene Donahue and Thomas Greer. One isn't sure, and Thomas Greer's card says they support the recommended action. So, are you, Mr. Greer?
Hi, Mr. Solsrum.
Okay, would you, when you finish, would you fill out a card?
Oh, I didn't think, I thought that I filled out my card with my $2,000 check.
I wish that were possible.
Okay. I appreciate the point you were driving at here, and it's a very interesting point. You know, is this precedent setting? And the answer is, it will be. No, there aren't any precedents. I can't find any precedence on transferring a CUP in the application stage. It may be practice, it may be what's done, that doesn't make it right. I think with this, everyone is very careful to give the definition that a CUP travels with the property. And a conditional permit, as I read it, is, and according to California law, is when it has been issued, it is a CUP. But before it's issued, it's an application. So there's a distinction between those two. Now, on this, we talk about the churches being the same plan and fitting into that same framework as the Cornerstone Church. There were numerous meetings, no, let me say, one meeting and numerous discussions between planning, who represents me and my beliefs, and Cornerstone Church and Discovery Church, where they got together and said, "We're going to have to make this look as close as possible to the Cornerstone Church if you want to get this passed." To me, that is a blatant conflict of interest between planning and an applicant. It's not customer service, as Mr. Clemon claims. We give customer service. I've read the customer service angle from a lot of different complaints on existing CUPs, and believe me, it is not that cordial. So I'm a little, I'm more of a letdown, I'm very disappointed in this whole process, and the activities of the planning commission. When you look at the next step in this thing, let's say you approve this, and it goes forward, and the CUP is approved. Now, the church gets out there, and it wants to go back to its original plan, not the modified one, to allow it to sneak in and get by the ordinance, because that's what's happening. We've got a $6 million piece of property. We have the ARLUPA threat. The ARLUPA threat in this case is unreal. You may as well forget about it. You've got Discovery Church on Easy Street, existing in Simi Valley, and a huge commercial building. Is there any discrimination against them? The answer is no. You've got Cornerstone with $8 million worth of real estate at the east end of the valley. Is there any discrimination against Cornerstone? No. I sat with Pastor Chan for breakfast when he offered me the property for $6 million, which I couldn't afford at that time. Maybe this week we can. But he was telling me that they bring in, and these are his words, "Between $100,000 to $150,000 a weekend." So if you do the math, that's $6 million bucks a year, tax-free. And these churches are pushing to force you to knuckle under and approve these projects in open space. I was going to ask Mr. Clemon, that's why I raised my hand. I'm sorry, Mr. Clemon, is that correct, Clemon? Sorry, I got your name wrong again. If you're looking at the existing zoning, the question you should be asking is, is this project... this project appropriate for this zoning? And the answer is no. The only thing that gives it its right to be in here is the threat of Arlopa and the fear of lawsuit. The land is zoned 40 acre, one house per 40 acres, just like mine. You can't do what they want to do. And what they're doing is, because of this threat of Arlopa, they are trying to push it through. And Cornerstone got in, and Planning, again, you know, as I see it from my eyes, okay? Probably totally different from theirs, they were going from customer service. But they granted extensions until Cornerstone could find this buyer, and they said, "We will have, take an option on the property to buy. We're not going to put our money up front there, but we'll go ahead and take an option that if we can be substituted in, then we'll buy the property." And so that's what Planning has done, is taken them through. Cornerstone was going to drop out of the whole thing altogether. He had spent, he told me, close to $1 million on the project. Now, we get to the new set of people, and I'm just asking you to do nothing, leave it as is, enforce the zoning laws of the County of Ventura the way they are. So I'm really not asking for much, for which I've got to pay $2,000. And that really does rub me. I've got the $2,000. But as Winston Wright said, when I gave this, you know, to him, "You're the number 10th," and I saw Murdoch was number 11th, "appeal this year." And I said, "You're kidding. Why is that?" And he said, "Well, usually when I tell them the fee, it gets rid of them." Now you tell me, is that proper representation in our government? I've got $2,000 that I can spend, but I don't think most people do. I don't have anybody behind me, it's my money myself. Then, he brought up the case that, "Too bad I wasn't in the coastal area, because they pay nothing." And I said, "What do you mean?" And he said, "No, coastal doesn't have to pay anything for a, for an appeal." So I went home and looked, and sure enough, they don't. So now you've got two types of Ventura County citizens, coastal citizens and non-coastal citizens. And if you don't think that's discriminatory, you're going to be, there's going to be a wake-up call coming. Because it is. It's $2,000, but it's the principle of the thing. And it's $2,000 times 11 last year, and I think times 9 a year before that, and, you know, on and on and on. Now, my biggest fear is the CUP goes through, the church gets in there, and then it starts to expand, the way they want to do. And I, I don't think it's appropriate here, because I think this is going to go on to supervisors and a court case, I believe. So we'll save some of that stuff, and I won't bore you with all the details. But what we have here is they considerably cut down what they wanted to do. And they even advised them, "Call them, call the fields, exercise fields for the church use, not for the public. Do this, do that. This way it'll look better, and we can push it through for you." Now that is totally in the face of 4402, the spirit of that, what the Board of Supervisors had put down. Now, I think he's telling me, in my little mind, I don't understand the ordinances, but 4402, it's not really, we don't have to worry about that, it's not here. But I, I definitely do believe 4402 is what influenced them to make a substitution rather than a new application. Because the new application would have said, "No, you can't do it until March 15th." Okay. Now, we get back to the enforcement of CUPs. Do any of you have any idea of the lack of enforcement of CUPs in this county? Do you nod, or are you not allowed to answer me? You're not allowed to answer me?
No, we're allowed to answer. The fact is, yes, we are aware, because this commission, in my 18 years, has dealt with many enforcement of this, you've started with mining, rolling through, so I hear what you're saying, you may not know, but I do.
Okay. I appreciate that, sir. You know, what I read from, I was talking to Howard Smith, you know, who is a big, he's behind the Ojai gravel trucks. I'm looking at that, I'm looking at the sampling that this office did, I'm looking at Judge Reiser's opinion of the county. I'm looking at, somebody had to step down and retire early because of this thing. So, you know, we've got to clean up our house. If we're going to do this, first of all, we need to give people access, you know, to speak before you, and not put up this barrier of $2,000. Because $2,000 is a lot of money to most people. They don't have it. So why have that barrier? Why have that discrimination? That's number one. Number two, when I come in here and I ask for information, I'm treated like I'm the antagonist. And all I'm trying to do is keep it the way it is. I don't want to change. I'm saying, "I bought the property, and it told me this is all I could do with the property." And I'd say, "The same thing as that property." So why does this guy feel he can come in here, buy the property, cheap, because of the restrictions, and then do what he wants to on it? It's just, there's something fundamentally not right with this whole procedure. And I, and I don't understand why. The CUP seem to be given out pretty willy-nilly, and there is no enforcement, contrary to Ms. Rodriguez says. I've read some of her letters to different people. The Habbad in Oak Park, one of the interesting things I read with that, I could read it to you, but it's, I don't want to take your time. But basically, they had done an unpermitted addition to their structure. They'd taken over a residence in a community, the neighbors are mad because of parking and all those kind of things, I'm sure you've heard of it. But then, they also did an unpermitted building addition, and it encroached on the setback from the back property line, the fence. And instead of coming in and saying, "You know what, you're going to have to fix that, and that's not allowed for our zoning, so you're going to have to take that off and remove it." What did they do? They issued a variance for them to make that legal. So what am I to think is going to happen next door when they put in another 40,000-foot building? Because they've got 138 acres. And they go, "Oh, you know what, we've, we've spent $10 million on this, it's too expensive to take down now, can we just get a variance for it?" What are you going to tell them? So, I, I think without adequate policing and enforcement of these CUPs, it's really a dangerous thing to do. And if we don't have the staff, and we don't have the money to police it, we shouldn't do it. I think you guys had the paintball guy before you last time, the airsoft guy, a couple weeks back. I've been complaining about that for seven years. Seven years. And then this weekend, they were doing it again. I don't know how you ruled, but they're still doing it. They don't listen. Because what's going to happen? Nothing. You put a $1,000 penalty on their title. So now is the only time that I can get in here and say something, and try and stop something that's going to be bad. And so that's why I'm here. So, thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate the time. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Yostrom.
Thank you.
I have two other speaker cards, but Mr., Mr., Mr. Greer is supporting the recommended action, and I have a card from Gene Donahue.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Thomas Greer, and I'm speaking in opposition of the appellant.
Okay. Are there any other in support of the appellant? Just your name and address, please?
I'm Gene Donahue, I live 195 Tierra Rahada Road in Simi Valley, and I'm certainly speaking in support of the appellant. At any rate, I don't know where to start on this. What part does someone not get preserving natural resources? Doesn't anyone read the newspapers anymore? I hear that they don't, I hear that the young people don't, but I don't, they get all this on television. But have they not heard the word sustainability, conservation, the Hippocratic oath, Cripic, whatever it is, oath, at least do no harm? Doesn't anyone have any children? Doesn't anyone have any grandchildren? They want to preserve something of our world today, that everything that's legal is not right, and everything that's right is not legal. And this is, I don't even know who this church is, is that someone that they don't even have anything? First Bible Church? Are they going to keep these, changing these names until they can get it right? But as far as, if I were building a doghouse, I don't have a dog, but if I did, you would certainly be asking for more fees in order to do that. So why not make them start all over, pay their fees to start in like someone else? They're churches, they're people, they're just like us, except they've got a name, a church. They're, they're all over Simi Valley. They seem to have a lot of money, every one of them, and every day in the newspapers, someone needs more money. Like, like, should I grow old, that are going to cut Imperial Havens, hundreds of adult care centers may close to lack of money? Where's that money going? In the universe to help somebody? Think of someone here in Simi Valley. It's a great place to live, it's a great valley, it's a great lifestyle. Why can't we keep it? Why can't someone step up and say, "Yeah, it's, I guess it's a precedent," but ignore that. The churches can't get along, they never have in any place in the world. So if we think we can get along with this church, and they're only going to do what they say they're going to do, we see that all the time, all over the world, not just here. If you look in the newspapers, there's plenty of churches. Can they get together and share space, instead of every, have a house, everyone has lights, everyone has cleanup, everyone has a gardener, everyone has a minister, everyone has assistant minister? Can't we get together somewhere? I think someone said that time. As far as that Arlopa agreement, Bill Clinton signed that, and he wasn't, you know, totally in the picture all the time, as hope all of you guys are. And it's just like the church is going to, "We're only going to do this, we're only going to do that, and we won't do this." It's like every boyfriend I ever had, they told me a lot of things, and they didn't always stand behind it. I hope that all of you will be able to stand up and look at this, the real picture of our future, our children, our grandchildren. And even if you look at the golden rule of the Hindus, it's really better than the Christians, as far as I'm concerned, it's more encompassing. It says, "Not just mankind, and womankind, and humankind, it's for the creatures of the earth and the earth." Let's start somewhere. Why don't we start here in Simi Valley? Thank you.
Thank you for a very spirited comment. Thank you, Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you.
I still have a card from Thomas Greer. Is he, okay, so at this point, we have no one who wants to speak in favor of, or supporting Mr. Yostrom. All right? Then, at this point, we'd like to have a presentation of persons in opposition to the, to the appeal, and that would be Mr. Greer.
Mr. Commissioner, and Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, my name is Thomas Greer, and I am the West Coast Regional Director for Visionary Studios, and I am also the owner's representative for Discovery Christian Church, located on, at 580 Easy Street in Simi Valley. We're basically here to concur with the endorsement of Staff's recommendation on this matter. As you know, Discovery's entered into an option to purchase the subject site from Cornerstone. And as a result of this negotiation, Discovery requested a name change of the CUP applicant from Cornerstone to Discovery on October 29, 2009. This was, this was subject to a, basically some meetings that Cornerstone and Discovery prompted with the county staff, the Planning Staff Department. In our negotiations with Cornerstone, we took a look at the issue of the moratorium and its impact upon our proposed transaction. And at that time, we decided that it would be best if we could move forward with just a name change on the application, as opposed to moving forward with an entirely new application. We, subsequent to that, requested a meeting with Planning Staff to ask the questions of whether or not that may be feasible. And they therefore asked us to submit our application for that name change, which they subsequently reviewed. And the, on November 17, 2009, the Planning Director granted that name change after determining that Discovery's site plan was essentially in conformance with directives issued by the Board of Supervisors, subsequent to a public hearing on March 24 of last year regarding the original application, where they approved the existence of a church and a Bible college on the site, but declined the use of the Children's Hunger Fund facility, which is roughly a 90,000 square foot plus facility that they were suggesting that we remove from the site plan. And we, in fact, did that in the site plan that we submitted. Now, in reality...
Excuse me a second, Commissioner, Duquesque.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you say the Board of Supervisors approved a CUP?
No, they did not approve the CUP.
No, they did not.
They did not approve the CUP.
So could you go back and restate that, so that, I'm sorry, we're speaking at the same time. Could you go back and, and more accurately say what, what direction the, the board gave and, with your understanding?
My understanding was, in their letter of non-compliance that they issued on April 2nd, subject to that March 24 public hearing, they indicated that they could support the, the existence of a church site and the Bible college on that, and that would be in compliance, but that the Children's Hunger Fund would not be, and that we would have to resubmit our plan without the Children's Hunger Fund.
So the fine difference is that, in concept, a church could go on that land.
Yes.
Whereas before, the, the, in the matrix, there wasn't a box checked or something.
Correct.
All had to do with checking a box.
It was basically, it was basically the board's response to the whole, our Arlopa issue, and in their opinion, based on that time, that under that requirement, that a church and a Bible college could be allowed on the property, but not the Children's Hunger Fund facility.
Okay. In, in concept?
In concept.
Yeah.
There's no formal approval of the CUP.
Okay. That's, that's where I got caught up and, and couldn't go forward, because I thought, "No, that's not right."
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Excuse me. You said the Bible college could be allowed. Conditional, right?
That was, that was...
It's not the Bible college will be allowed, right? It's not that the Bible college will be allowed if you apply for it.
It could be allowed.
It could be, thank you.
It was a permitted use under Arlopa on the site.
I've got a lot of questions about that after, but please, complete your...
So as I said, the Planning Director reviewed our site plan, determined that it was effectively in conformance with Cornerstone's site plan. But in reality, Discovery's proposed site plan will have a significantly lower impact on the site for the following reasons. First of all, we have removed the over 90,000 square feet of Children's Hunger Fund. And after doing that, if you look at apples on apples, that would have reduced the Cornerstone project down to roughly 116,000 square feet of developed building space, plus a 3,000-seat outdoor amphitheater that they intended to use for worship, which we think would have had a significant sound impact, possibly on the community. Our site plan came back with 115,000 square feet, but it included in that 115,000 square feet was an enclosed worship space for 2,000 seats, which we think would have a dramatically lower impact on the site. In addition to that, the athletic fields that Cornerstone had proposed were formal athletic fields, soccer and baseball fields. Our, what we call recreational areas are more of a park-like setting. We're not going to have formal ball fields, that's not part of our site plan, and so we feel that that will be more conducive and fit in better within the community. Discovery has reduced the parking count from 2,000 spaces to 1,500. That's a reduction of nearly five acres of parking on the site. As I mentioned before, the board had indicated that the Bible college could be an intended use on the property. We have removed the Bible college from our site plan. As a, as a result, that will significantly reduce weekday traffic counts in the area. The proposed site grading for Discovery will be much less, and thereby reducing impacts on environmentally sensitive habitat and species. In essence, we want to be good neighbors and good members of the community. And at the same time, it's also, we feel incumbent on our part, to reduce the impact on the site as much as we possibly can, while still meeting the program of the church, because of the financial aspects, really also, of trying to mitigate environmental issues. So it's in our best interests as well to try to reduce those impacts. We concur with Staff's conclusion that the name change application should be granted on the grounds that, number one, we're relying on... on the grounds that, number one, we're relying on Staff's position that precedent exists for granting this request. And secondly, while we do not believe it is the intent of the county to discriminate against the church, we nevertheless believe a strong argument can be made that a failure to grant this request is a violation of our Rupa, especially considering the fact that Inter Moratorium ordinance number 4402 was enacted as a direct response to this application. In light of the arguments presented by Staff and the benefits discussed pertaining the reduced impacts on the site proposed by Discovery, we request the Commission to approve the Planning Director's decision of November 17th, 2009, and deny the appeal in question. Thank you. And do you have any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Dufus.
We have in our packet a letter from you dated October 29th, 2009 regarding the... There's a bunch of bullet points about describing what the new project is. Is there anything significantly different from those bullet points?
I don't believe so.
This is on page 107 of our packet. It's a letter, Visioneering Studios, October 29th, 2009. And I'm talking about just the basic... Well, the bullet points. Is there anything significantly different from what you're proposing now?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you.
I certainly have some comments and questions. I'd like to... I'd have some comments and questions. I'd like to refer to page 110, which compares your possible CUP with the possible CUP that Cornerstone was. And just some general questions. What is your definition of a church? That shouldn't be so hard.
No.
What is a church?
A church is where a, they're a group of people who have a particular religious belief, philosophy, value system in their life. This particular church happens to be one that's based upon the Bible and specifically the Gospels and faith in Jesus Christ. And these people come together on a regular basis in supporting each other to share and worship together. And at the same time, the church also exists to meet the spiritual needs of those members of the church and in the community and to be a place where the community can come for their spiritual needs. And in addition, the church has a purpose of outreach to both the local community and a responsibility to reach internationally as well as this church does in information programs and providing for the poor and needy in the community. And I think if you do your research, you'll find that the majority of service to poor and needy in this world occurs through the local church. And so to me, that's what a church represents.
I think you did a very good job with that. Very good job. I'm impressed. Now, tell me, people coming together to worship, what do they need to come together to worship as far as your proposal is concerned?
They would need assembly space.
Like a sanctuary?
A sanctuary.
Okay. What else do they need to come together to worship that's part of a church?
They would need parking.
Yes, I understand. What else?
They would need education space for their children who are being taught the beliefs of their faith.
You mean like classrooms?
Classroom space, and the children also have worship sanctuary space as well, the faith.
Okay.
At the same time that the parents are in there worship.
Okay, so now we've got a sanctuary, we've got some parking, we've got a children's place to worship. What else?
It's gathering places where people come together and pastors meet with their leaders. Places that aren't necessarily office environments, but courtyard spaces, places where they can sit down, have coffee together, discuss their ministry areas, because most of the ministry in the church doesn't occur through pastors. It occurs through the laypeople in the church who are being trained by the pastors to perform those ministries. And so there's a lot of time spent with the pastor training lay leaders in the ministry areas. And they prefer to do that in formal environments that are conducive to a social arrangement as well.
You think you need eight classrooms? Classrooms for classes? I know Sunday school probably you have. You think you need eight classrooms?
We have done an extensive amount of... Our firm, Visioneering Studios, in the last eight years has done the master planning and programming and development of over 100 church sites across the country. And we do an extensive analysis of the relationships of the number of children to the number of adults that are in worship, determining the amount of square footage that is going to be required to meet the needs of those children. And we don't build any more than we have to. It's not in the interest of church, it's not in the interest of the church and good stewardship to build more than we need to handle that. And that's why we don't have a huge worship center that will handle all of our congregants in one service. Because that would just mean we'd need a larger facility for worship, we would need a larger facility for all the classrooms. And so we actually program in such a way so that the church does multiple services so that we can reduce the impacts of the buildings that we put on the campus.
Okay, now, you're asking for 1,500 parking spaces for a sanctuary of 2,000 people. Do you normally expect you'll fill the church? So you'll need 1,500 parking spaces for the sanctuary, for the religious aspect of your church?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Malter?
Yes.
There's one question before you. The question is, did the Planning Director properly allow the change of name in the CUP application? I understand the need to understand the full scope of this project, but I think we're getting a little far afield here, getting into definitions of fundamental nature of the project itself. Those conditions, those approvals are not before you. What I'm concerned with is that, from a Brown Act standpoint, this has only been identified as an appeal of the question of the CUP change in name of application. I'd rather like to stay on that as the agenda title. If this was a broader agenda, which went into conditions of the church and what the church could build on there, then it would say that on the Brown Act. And people who would have information or would like to speak to those things would be here at this meeting. As it is, it's only agendized as a simple appeal matter on one issue. I understand your need to understand these things and you have broad jurisdiction, but that is not before you at this point in time. So I just want to remind you of that, Commissioner.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. My intent of asking these questions at this point is that those are the questions I'm going to ask if this comes to us as a CUP. And yes...
And it's not before you as a CUP.
Right.
And we don't know if it will ever come to you as a CUP.
Right.
The Board took action. It's very well documented. It's a matter of public record. There's no question about what they did and how they did what they did and why they did what they did. The only question before you again is, did the Planning Director properly allow the change of CUP applicant name?
Thank you for your counsel. I have no further questions. Let me look once more here. No, I have no further questions. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Greer. Are there any other speakers at this time on this agenda item? All right, at this time... There's a possi... There's a chance for a rebuttal by the appellant, which would be Mr. Yostrom, I believe. A rebuttal to what's been stated.
The only rebuttal that I have is that I've got documents, and Mr. Clement has documents that show that the original proposed scale of the Discovery Church was much greater than what they're saying now. And there is an email that says, "We have reduced it to these different levels." I'm aware of the Council's objection to going into this detail, but, you know, to me, it's all part of the same thing. You know, is it the same, is it an elephant or is it a giraffe, you know, that's coming in here? And I don't think it's quite as easy as that. I think just slipping a name change, even on one of their emails to Planning, they said, "The new applicant will be named," and it was the pastor of the church. So to me, when you say "the new applicant," and then when you're changing, you know, the plan that you had to agree to morph into the Cornerstone one, you're playing games. There was a new applicant. That should be the end of it. I can produce that email for you if you'd like today. But a new applicant, that to me sounds, that's a new CUP application. Keep in mind, there is no CUP in place. Keep in mind the section that I quoted in there that Mr. Clement takes issue with, but it doesn't apply. But it says, "In the ordinance," which is the whole document, the way it's written... I mean, I go through contracts for a living, but when it says "the ordinance," it's all inclusive, it's macro. And it's saying, "The Director must err on the most conservative side, not make new law, not make new legislation." And what she's trying to do is trying to stretch this thing. And I object to that. That's the basis. And there were two parts to my appeal. The second part was the fees. And I'm dead serious about that. I'm going to continue it, you know, from here if I don't get satisfaction. And I'm talking about for all the fees that all the people have paid. It's, to me, it's just not fair that some citizens have to pay and others don't. That's just totally unfair to me. It speaks to our whole system of government. And it's unconstitutional, from what I've read in the California Constitution. And if any of you'd like it, you've got my email, Dan's got it. I'll send you the quotations. But thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yostrom. Any other questions at this point? Any closing comments by Staff?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to have some closing comments here. I found a lot of the things that Mr. Strostrum said to be completely untrue and unfounded. And I would like to address those. First of all, there is no collusion between the Planning Department and this particular applicant. The process is, is... Can you come in? And the question before you is very clear. Can you come in midway through a process or any time before it's approved and change name, change applicants, change property owners, and still maintain that land use entitlement? And the answer, in my mind, is yes. It's always been yes. It's a land use entitlement issue. It's the same for every other county Planning Director that we've polled and asked. Imagine the situation where we would say, a shopping center came in and Ralph said, "Okay, we're going to build there." And then Vons came in after they were six months into the process and said, "No, Vons is going to take it over instead." And we said, "Start over." That's not the land use principle that goes here. So it is, it goes with the land. And what we did and appropriately tried to do was not redesign their project, but to say, "This is the Cornerstone Discovery Church, this Cornerstone project. And if your project, your new applicant project is in the same size, scope, and scale, you don't need to begin at ground zero again." That is a land use principle, and I think that that is the question before you. The other issues that you've gotten into, first of all, I want to make it clear that the appeals and the fees of the appeals were not part of your appeal. So that's part of not what's being discussed here. But what I do want to say to that is, all counties charge for appeals. There is a charge to that. But it is capped at this county at $2,000. And if you prevail here, you get your entire $2,000 back. If the county prevails on our decision, we have to pay everything over your $2,000. And I believe, when I ran the numbers for the last two years of what that's cost the citizens of Ventura County, it's probably to the tune of $80,000 or $90,000. So it's a $2,000 cap unless there's a notice of violation involved, and that is not in this case. So the county would bear the cost for the rest.
On this appeal, it's been $80,000?
No, on just general appeals in the last couple of years. So there is a cost to the citizens for these appeals. The cost to you is a maximum of $2,000. If you prevail, you get your money back. And I'm not sure if you realize that or not.
I do.
Okay. That's not a decision that's before us today, the cost of that appeal, right? Because you did not include that in your appeal document. So I wanted to be clear on that. A couple of other things that Mr. Strostrum said I really need to take exception to. And one of them is this discussion of other cases that are before you, the Habbad case. They have applied for a variance. They weren't granted a variance. That's a complete misstatement. The fact that we, or somebody here from the county retired early because of an enforcement issue, that is simply not true. So I don't want to let those things be out there. I don't want to have a tit-for-tat here. I'd be happy to sit down with Mr. Strostrum and go through any of these cases that he wants to go through in any manner that he wants to go through, but I feel that it's unjust to the Planning Department to let these things go unanswered. So that's what I had to say about his comments, and Dan probably has more specific comments.
Thank you, Ms. Madrigas. Dan, any other thing?
Actually, I just have one point of clarification. At certain points in testimony, there were general statements that the Board was made a decision on whether to process the Bible college. That was never a part of the appeals. Colleges are allowed by the means of a conditional use permit in the open space zones. I just want to make that clear. That's my only point that I'd like to make. Thanks.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to close the public hearing. And before we start deliberations, I'm going to call on my esteemed colleague on my left to bring us up to date on what exhibits should be included.
Do I get extra pay for this?
Yes.
It's a long-running joke up here. I'm not sorry. Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make sure that the record reflects that we are accepting Exhibits A through D and number eight into the record.
Thank you very much. At this point, it's time now to begin deliberations on this appeal. What are your comments? What are your desires, Commissioners? Commissioner Dufus?
I just want to begin a discussion without making a motion. I sympathize a lot. I've had experience with, you know, being on that side of the podium and being on that side of a process that sometimes is hard to follow and intimidating. And a person doesn't have limitless amounts of time, energy, and money. So I have tremendous sympathy. However, it's my job to kind of like flick away the stuff that separate the wheat from the chaff. And there are certain things that I don't, I don't find any merit in. But one thing I did, and to me, it's the most basic one, is this a new application? Is it similar enough in size and scale? It doesn't matter to me whether it's a church or not. We've already gotten direction from the Board that this type of land use, and it doesn't matter what it would be, whether it was a college or some other assembly use that's already allowed. So two things kind of stick with me. That is, that it is in no way less intense or similarly intense in land use. You're talking about an area that's just completely empty versus, and Cornerstone was going to be very sensitive and have an outdoor sanctuary. It was going to be open air. They showed us plans. It was very much in keeping with the area. This is going to be an enclosed sanctuary. It's a building. And it doesn't matter to me whether that is, whatever they do inside of it, if it's allowed in the zone, that's it. So I do not believe that it's similar in size and scale. And I think there's this little hook on the moratorium. And I was not here when the Planning Commission decided not to make those text amendments regarding open space. But I think you made a comment just a couple of minutes ago about what open space is and what it isn't. There's a lot of stuff that's a... a lot of stuff that's allowed in open space that people don't, don't think about, wouldn't agree, you know, a layperson would say, "Wait a minute." But the first application that was trying to get an application for a CUP seemed more in keeping with the spirit and the purpose of open space. They had ball fields for the public to use, you know, they had amenities that would benefit the public. And this does not. This, to me, is an entirely different project. It has a big building instead of something that's outdoors, and it has no ball field. I asked specifically, is this, you know, pretty much the same thing that you're proposing now on this letter from Visioneering? And he said, "Yep." And this is vastly different. So I think, I think it would have been fair to, to have Discovery, you know, start like a new project, because it is a new project. That is my opinion.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Russell. Yes. I'm mulling around what you're saying, because that's what I've been hearing too. So I want to separate again a little more wheat from the chaff, if I may. First of all, whether or not the director can consider who takes ownership of a property during either the application process, to me is, you know, completely irrelevant. We cannot consider whether or not it's an economic benefit to the applicant. Those are considerations. I can tell you right now, just basic contractual law, if we try to prevent somebody from assigning something, we're going to, we can't, period. We're not in that position. So whoever has title, whether it's this party or that party, is irrelevant as far as a planning purpose. Planning purpose runs with the land and the use. So therefore, you know, even though it's silent, I can tell you, the county council, and I'm sure the other attorney up here can tell you, we're not going to get in the middle of that one, because that's their legal right as far as a contract. But as far as this issue is with the change of ownership and the recommended change of the use, does that constitute a new application? And that's the gray area. And I'm struggling, like you're saying, but also, that's the reason we give the planning director a level of discretionary decision-making. And so, but I've listened to what county council said. What is before us is whether we're actually determining the CUP or the merits thereof, rather. Can we do that? And that's where I'm kind of caught between the legalese and the merits of what's underneath it. So I would like to hear from some of the other commissioners on that particular area.
Commissioner Madrigas?
As I sit here and review the document that, that has been submitted in support of the substitution, I hear what you're saying. Visually, I, you know, I'm grasping what you're saying. And part of your, or part of your issue is that the original application is being taken from a potential public access to deny public access other than to the membership by eliminating, eliminating specifically lighted fields that were represented to be open to the public at some point in time. Whether they would have been or not, you know, it would be conjecture. I think the fact that there was going to be lighting in that area, in that Terre Haute Valley, was an issue that impacted us when we had, I'm talking about exterior lighting, was an issue that impacted us when we came to the decisions we came to, I believe it was back in March, if I'm correct, of last year. As I look at the documents and look at this comparison issue of construction or square footage, the square footage is, certainly appears to be consistent with or in line with the original application. Major difference, obviously, is the fact that there were not formal constructed defined recreational areas as opposed to just an open green belt dedicated to approximately the same amount of square footage. We had to benefit, an issue previously of hearing the presentation and asking questions specific to the presentation that was before us. At this point in time, I realize that, well, that's not in front of us, first off. But staff has had the opportunity to receive representation in the form of documents and/or renderings of some kind, I assume, to come to the conclusion that, that the substitution and revised substitution by Discovery and the revised submission required by the board, because we did exclude the Children's Hunger Fund and that entire building process from the original application, that some sort of substitution had to be submitted per the board's decision, previous decision. We're looking at, or it's being represented to us that there has been a substitution, a proposed substitution of the original application. But I don't see or hear where it's inconsistent with what this commission certainly originally looked at and signed off on and what ultimately the board, I think, agreed to as well. So I'm kind of inclined to support or recommend staff action. Well, I too am inclined to support the staff recommendation also. The planning director didn't grant a CUP. She just allowed him to do. I'm inclined to go with the staff recommendation. The planning director, in her discretion, reviewed the situation and made a call. She didn't grant a CUP. She merely allowed the process to continue. I'm personally familiar on probably hundreds of matters that have gone through planning process as a city attorney and otherwise, where the properties have been sold while the planning process was ongoing and the entitlements always followed. So I understand, I understand the frustration of some people dealing with this, and perhaps the larger issues will be handled other places. But I would recommend the following staff recommendation in this case.
I've got a conflict between my head and my heart. The planning director did exactly what she should have done. She looked at everything. She looked at the past. She examined what Discovery was going to do, what Cornerstone was going to have to do. And she denied the appeal based on the valid reasons that have been used in the past. I don't like it. But while my heart says I'd really like to uphold this appeal, my head says that it's the right thing to do to support the planning director, because I think the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, just for Mr. Yostrom and obviously the public that you brought with you, which I greatly appreciate seeing them here. We struggle with this all the time. If you've been back here in March, we struggled with this deeply as the technical body of the open ordinance and all of that, and our Lupa issue that came before us. And we denied it based on those technical rules. And then it went to the Board of Supervisors, and that's where this moratorium, because of obviously some of the questions that are involved, which you have properly raised here today, because we have the same ones. And we continue to have the same questions. Just as Ms. Donahue brought up, this constant pressure of the open spaces has been here a very long time, and it will continue to be so, whether it's Amundsen or Terre Haute. We battled this all the time. And I know you don't get to see it here all the time, but this commission and the other commissions that we've sat on deal with it, trying to balance those acts of what is appropriate for the property owner as an individual or as an entity, preserving rights, but also what's good for the overall general welfare. And we struggle with that all the time. To the point, Mr. Yostrom, when there were violations out there, that when staff and code enforcement finally were able to do, find them, again, you're right, there's not enough tax money for everybody to go out there and look at everything. We found we just didn't have the teeth. The best example was the unfortunate gentleman that bulldozed down literally thousands of acres of scrub oaks. And we found out we just didn't have the teeth. So we asked the Board of Supervisors to give us some teeth. So you brought up the paintball situation. We heard that. And five out of the six, we imposed upon him, and there are penalties now, stiff financial penalties, if he doesn't fix it. So I'm a little concerned, but you said today that he continued on with it. But the process, yes, it's slow, it's meandering, and sometimes very frustrating, as the commissioner has said there. But be assured, we try the best we can with what we have. And we listen, we hear, and but then unfortunately, as decision-makers, we have to balance. And that's exactly what the chair said. There's your heart, and then there's what you have to do sometimes by law, where the county council was absolutely right. We'd like to go into the whole thing. But the Brown Act is to protect the greater public that they hear our deliberations and that they hear what we're hearing, and we get their input. So sometimes it sounds like legalese and we're trying to narrow things down too much. There's a reason for that, and that's the greater good of the public. So understand, when we look at this, and you bring up questions that I think are valid. I mean, this $2,000 field, I know it's not in front of us, county council, but it does raise a question. And that's one of the ones we will be asking a little bit later and giving direction. But unfortunately, we're narrowed down on this particular situation. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to support the recommendations of the staff with the additions of Exhibits A and D and eight as presented.
Second. Commissioner. Motion and a second. Are there any other discussions?
I'm sorry, county council? Mr. Martin, I just wanted to add a few things for your decision-making, so that you clearly know where you stand on this issue. There was an issue raised that the moratorium ordinance 4402 is somehow being violated in letter or in spirit. That urgency ordinance was adopted pursuant to Government Code Section 65858, and it permits a local agency to prohibit the formal processing of development, does not, excuse me, does not prohibit, let me back up. Nothing in that section permits a local agency to prohibit the formal processing of a development application. And that comes right out of a case called Building Industry Legal Defense versus Superior Court. It's a 1999 case. And it basically says that that section that the board relied upon to adopt the urgency moratorium ordinance only stops the issuance of a permit, not the processing of an application. So there's nothing in the prohibitory sections of 4402 or 4400 that in any way causes a problem with what the planning director did in as far as the change in the CUP applicant name. As far as, and this keeps coming up, and I would like to address it now so that there's no question that this issue of the quote-unquote discriminatory impact of these fees goes. I had the opportunity to see Mr. Strostrum's email on that point, and he cites to California Constitution Article I, Section 21. And basically, that code section deals with husband and wife and separate property. So it has nothing to do with privileges and immunities, as he's claiming in his email, which is in your package. I did, however, take the opportunity, knowing that what he was arguing about is there's something in the California Constitution that he's relying upon, and it's in a completely different section. The section that he was citing to was repealed in 1975 and is now no longer applicable. The section that he seems to be referring to is Article I, Section 7, Subdivision E. And that section basically says that a citizen or class of citizens may not be granted privileges or immunities not granted on the same terms to all citizens. Privileges or immunities granted by the legislature may be altered or revoked. That's basically what it says. Going to his question about coastal and non-coastal, and somehow that sets up this disparate treatment and this improper equal, violation of the Equal Protections Clause is wrong, because under case law, it clearly says that the burden is upon the individual to show that there is a classification and that that classification was improper. The classification that we're talking about, coastal and non-coastal, was established by the California Coastal Act in 1976, Public Resources Code, Section 30,000. And it's been elaborated upon by Title 14, California Code of Regulation, Sections 13,000 and following. And it clearly establishes, one, the state's preemptive ability to come in and claim that the coastal access and the coastal issues are paramount and must be treated separately on a statewide basis and not on a local basis. And by doing that in the California Coastal Act, it clearly set out for itself that they will regulate entirely in this field of the Coastal Act. They decide how permits are issued, how plans are done, how everything is done on the coastal. And that's the California Coastal Commission, and that's the Coastal Act. And it has been found to be constitutional, because as soon as that legislation was passed in 1976, there was a slew of litigation claiming that that was an unconstitutional grab of local authority over land use rights, and the Supreme Court upheld the California Coastal Act. So it's been well documented, well established. There is no violation of equal protection as far as the Coastal Commission deciding it's not going to charge for appeals in its jurisdiction, whereas locals have that ability in theirs, and every county does do that. So for all of those reasons, that argument is not valid, is not supported by law or by fact. The moratorium ordinance is not in any way, shape, or form can be read to prohibit or stop the planning director making that action. And finally, my one point of clarification, when the board decided to go forward with the Cornerstone project and allow that it be processed, it was not simply on the basis of the federal law or Lupa. There is a provision within the non-coastal zoning ordinance that says that if there is federal or state law that addresses a similar issue that is sought to be regulated by the non-coastal zoning ordinance, federal or state law will preempt. And there is a preemption provision in the non-coastal zoning ordinance. And when we read that in together, in conjunction with our Lupa, the decision and advice was given to the Board of Supervisors, and they acted the way that they did. So just for a matter of clarity, a lot of things were said. Most of them have no bearing on this case, and none of them in any way abrogate or prohibit the planning director from taking the decision that she did.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wong, for that clarification. Now, did you make your motion?
Yes, I made a motion, and I believe Mr. Ossard seconded it.
Correct. And you seconded it. Are there any other discussions? I thank you, Commissioner Duquesne, for the very astute comments that you made about that. All in favor of the motion signified, thing, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carried.
Okay. And the erudition that we like to do for the naysayer, would you allow the commissioner to say one?
I'm sorry, say it again.
I don't believe it's a matter of listening to heart over mind. I believe that it's an entirely new project, and it would have been appropriate to have an entirely new application.
Thank you. Commissioners, it is now high noon. We have a couple other agenda items. We could continue. I don't think these are going to be as time-consuming. Or we can take a break, come back after lunch. What's your pleasure?
I'd like to forge ahead.
Forge ahead?
What?
Forge ahead?
What do you have to say?
Forge ahead. We're going to forge ahead. The next item on the agenda, item, five-minute break. Be back at high noon plus five. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. We'd like to move on to Agenda Item Number 7, which is LU-090087. Request for a conditional use permit to convert an existing 4,610 square foot, 11-bedroom hotel to an intermediate residential care facility of seven or more persons. No new construction or demolition of any buildings or structures would occur. So Becky Linder is the case planner?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon. I'm Becky Linder from County Planning Division, here to present to you Conditional Use Permit Number LU-09-0087. I have one housekeeping item correction has been noticed on Page 187 of your staff report.
Becky, excuse me, would you bring those?
Bring them together?
Yeah, bring them together, that's right. Okay, thank you. Now, what?
Page?
What page?
Page 187 of your staff report. It sounds loud from here, but it's not. Okay. Third line from the bottom of the first paragraph, where it's compliance with SEQA, which reads "One legal lot should be changed to two legal lots." Typo. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for the conversion of a 4,610 square foot, 11-bedroom hotel into an intermediate residential care facility of seven or more persons. The facility will be used as an alcohol and drug recovery center, which includes related treatment, counseling, and family therapy services. The facility will house up to a maximum of 22 adults, and for care related to drug and alcohol-related rehabilitation. The residents will be at the site to receive treatment for approximately a 29 to 90-day stay, and will not have their own vehicles, but will rely on three vans provided by the care facility for their transportation needs. 11 parking spaces on the site would remain on the site for the employees, clients, and guests of the care facility. The facility will be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and there's an existing 504-square-foot detached accessory storage and laundry building on the site that will continue to be used as a storage and laundry building for the facility. The project is located at 691 North Main Street, at the southwest corner of Main and Center Streets in the community of Piru. So an oblique imagery showing the site. The site's located where the little red X is on the corner. I'm going to give a little project history and background of the site. The existing building was constructed in 1888, and it is believed to have been the second home of David C. Cook, Piru's founder. In 1889, it became the Piru Hotel, and later the Mountain View Hotel. In the early '60s, CUP 3346 permitted the structure and site as a senior care facility known as the Round Rock Rest Home, which operated until the early 1990s. On April 18, 1989, the site was designated as a county historical landmark, number 124. In September of 2002, the Planning Director approved a planned development permit to allow the remodel of the facility as a hotel, the Heritage Valley Inn and Restaurant, which it is now. The remodel included 10 guest rooms and one bedroom for manager's quarters, and the construction of the storage and laundry facility. On July 2, 2009, Forterra applied for the CUP request before you today. The general plan designation for the project site is urban, and it is located in the Piru Area Plan as commercial. The project site has a zoning designation of commercial plan development with a community business district overlay zoning designation. This is a map or a drawing of the site. It's the site plan, which shows the 4,600, whoops, sorry, the 4,600 square foot structure in the middle. There we go. And then the laundry facility and storage facility down here in the corner, and the 11 parking spaces. And this is Main Street, Center, and an alley between it. The 11 parking spaces on the west end of the property would, and property line and access to the site would continue to be provided via the 30-foot wide public alley to Center Here, the next three photos are photos of the building, the structure of the site, which is surrounded by mature and well-groomed landscaping and trees. This is the front of the structure, side view, and the rear of the structure. The Piru Neighborhood Council reviewed the proposed project, including the sign change for the Heritage Valley Inn when the new tenants take over, and that new sign is Exhibit 11 in your staff report. And the council agrees, as did the public at their last general meeting, that the proposed sign would be appropriate, and a copy of that email is Exhibit A of your staff report. Really, there's not going to be much change to the sign, just, I believe, just the wording is changing. This is an oblique imagery photo of the site looking north. And this slide shows, what I wanted to show you was the existing developments surrounding the project site, which consists of single-story residences located to the south and north across Center Street, over here, and to the west across the alley, back in here, and commercial businesses such as the ice cream shop and the Piru Post Office to the east, which are single-story buildings similar in size and scale of the proposed project. The existing structures on the project site would not be modified and are consistent with the height, bulk, and scale of the surrounding one-story commercial and residential development. Moreover, the project doesn't involve any construction or demolition to facilitate the conversion of the hotel to the residential care facility. Compliance with SEQA. The project has been determined not to have a significant impact on the environment, and is exempt pursuant to two sequen, excuse me, two sections in the SEQA guidelines. Section 15303, because the project involves the conversion of existing structures from one use to another, and Section 15305A for projects which involve minor lotline adjustments that don't result in the creation of a new parcel or result in any changes in land user density, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Since the project involves the conversion of an existing hotel to an intermediate care facility, the project doesn't require any changes to the exterior of the hotel building or to the accessory structure in order to accommodate the proposed use. The project will require the recreading of a parcel map waiver voluntary merger lotline adjustment in order to merge the three legal lots, which constitute the project site, into two legal lots. The merger of the three lots into two lots will not result in a change of the land use or density of the project site. Permit standards and supporting evidence are provided for your commission in the staff report, and all proposed findings have been met. Property owners within 300 feet of the exterior boundary of the proposed project site were notified by U.S. Mail, and a notice was published in the Ventura County Star. To date, the Planning Division has not received any public comments on the project. The Piru Neighborhood Council reviewed the proposed project and is in support of it. I will now read the recommended actions. Based on this presentation and the staff report, the Planning Division recommends, find that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to the SEQA guidelines, Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15061B2, Section 15303, and Section Adopt a resolution to adopt the proposed findings, Section F above, and approve Conditional Use Permit Number LU-09-0087, subject to the conditions provided in Exhibit 8, and designate the Planning Director and the Resource Management Agency as a custodian in location of the records of proceedings. The applicant and his representative are here today, and the property owner, and are available to answer questions regarding the project. That concludes the staff presentation. Are there any questions, staff?
Before questions, we would like disclosure. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information, only if that information is not contained in the record before us in this matter. Commissioner Duquesne?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Ossad?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Malter has no disclosures. Commissioner Westner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
Thank you very much. Questions for Becky? Commissioner Rodriguez?
I have one, just out of curiosity. Are there any restrictions on the siting of this type of facility as it relates to proximity to an elementary school or a school route that you're aware of?
There aren't restrictions in the ordinance that I'm aware of, but there may be restrictions in the state of California, but they will be licensed by the state of California as well to operate their facility if approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Becky. No other question? Question, Commissioner Ossad?
I noticed that Public Works. Public Works Agency Transportation Department's conditions of approval for proposed projects include a payment of a traffic impact mitigation fee. It would seem that the traffic going from a hotel to this particular use would significantly decrease. What's the justification for a fee?
Just a second, let me get to that condition.
I'm on Page 188, Subparagraph C.
188? Oh. Public Works assigns traffic impact fees. Hold on, let me see. That's Condition 27, Page 214 of the staff report.
Right.
And it's part of their ordinance that the new permittee would deposit, based on the square footage and average daily trips of the proposed project, because it is a new project, a fee according to the average daily trips of about $1,174. It's in their ordinance, the transportation, the county ordinance, that's the traffic impact mitigation fee ordinance. So you're right, it wouldn't be very much traffic, could be less, but there is a fee for it.
All right.
And Commissioner Cherry, if I might add, there was no fee collected for the previous use, that is, the use of the hotel, so, because the fees weren't paid at that time, the requirement is to pay for the fees now, so.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
I would like to now open the public hearing, and we'll hear first from the applicant. I have two speaker cards and a supported recommendation card. The first speaker I have is Andy Arias. Andy Arias, supporting a recommendation.
Good afternoon, Andy Arias, Piru, California resident. I am here to support the project.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ossad, will you just give us your address?
Oh, sure. Andy Arias, 773 and 1/2 Orchard Street in Piru.
Thank you.
The applicant, better tomorrow, has been out to the council and to the community and made their presentations. I'm supporting this project because, first of all, the jobs that it will create and the purpose it will serve, and I think that that's a good use of that facility. I think that it'll also provide a much-needed service. The applicant, the owner, Mr. Cohen, has been a very responsible property owner in Piru, and has made some extra effort to encourage this, some of the businesses in Piru are looking forward to it. I know that there's already been some improvements on one of the storefronts that would be, you know, an additional facility for this. So I think that that benefits and the assurances that they have given us. Also, my understanding that this would be a pay-for-fee service, it wouldn't be like a Prop 36-type of referral, because I know there've been some concerns about the school proximity. They're not real close, but a lot of kids do walk to school. I also want to clarify that early on in the process, there was a petition around town that kind of had it confused about what the use was going to be. This site obviously has a lot of history being out there, and it's not like the, some of the homes that, well, what the the homes that, well, what this originally was years ago in the '60s, or there was another hotel in Piru called the Piru Hotel that also was for elderly gentlemen, and there was concern, people were mixing those up, and that's, this is a much different kind of use and a much more regulated kind of use. So I think that that would be to the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arias. The next card I have is Alan Nelson.
I filled out the card just in case there were any questions.
Any other people who want to speak on this issue? If not, we can have closing comments by staff, if any. Do you have anything, Becky? No? Okay, in that case, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Excuse me, I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Did you see Mr. Cohen is here? Can I ask a question, Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, I knew I could get you out.
You know, I've been up here so many times in the last month, I try to avoid it.
Since I've never had the pleasure of staying at the Heritage Inn.
Unfortunately, you're in a good crowd.
Is there an ABC permit that exists for the site?
Correct.
Okay, I guess I need to know what's going on with that.
It's being sold.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's being sold.
It is being sold.
The ABC license, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Always nice seeing you again. All right, I'm closing the public hearing, and what's your pleasure, commissioners? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Are we in discussion, or?
Whatever you want.
Discussion, motion?
Well, I'm inclined to support recommended staff action. The two issues I had, I think I just spoke to, and that was the issue, whether or not there was an ABC permit, ironically, for the site. But I can see it's going to be taken care of and will no longer be applicable. And secondarily, whether there was any sort of restriction or prohibition as it relates to the site and the proximity to a school, in this case, an elementary school. Although it wasn't stated clearly, it sounds like, and I don't believe the vendor is actually going to operate, the site is here, but there's a representation made. Oh, I see. Well, thank you.
I would be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. If you would state your name and address for the record, and then fill out a speaker card before you leave.
I think I'd better reopen the public hearing at this point. So I'm reopening a public hearing, please state your name and address.
Good afternoon, my name is Paul Howarth, I'm the CEO of Fort Terrace. We also run Better Tomorrow, which is one of our treatment facilities. I live at 212 Joliet, Huntington Beach, in California.
And my question is, there was a representation made that clientele would be fee-for-service, and this is not a Prop 33 applicable population you intend to accommodate, which might have an impact on the siting, if there is in fact a problem with the education code or whatever it is we've checked through. Can you speak to that representation?
Sure. The clientele that we're going to be housing there is, we primarily take insurance, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Aetna, Cigna. So these are employed people who have come across some struggles in their life, and they come to us to seek the treatment. We've run into the same questions in other cities, and I'm not an attorney, but my layman's perspective of what we've gone through in other cities is, because they've declared themselves an addict, an alcoholic or a drug addict, the federal government considers them disabled. So there's actually specific protections that allow them to be within a proximity of a school, so it's actually quite the opposite. But we do not take any parolees, we are not direct releases from county jail or from parole, we do not take sex offenders. So to say that none of our clients are ever going to be on probation, that's not the case. If someone gets a DUI and they need to straighten out their life, they come to us, their health insurance pays for it, they may be on probation for the DUI, but it's not a condition of their probation necessarily to be with us. Most people don't realize it, but if a judge orders someone to go into treatment as a sentence or a condition of probation, it actually violates the, or vacates a person's health insurance, the health provider will not pay for it, if it's by court order. So once again, it's actually quite the opposite of what some people think. So we're on the expensive side for treatment centers. We're not the Malibu and those types of places, but we're definitely above the Salvation Army and the Freeer-type programs. We're somewhere in between.
Okay, thank you, that really answers a lot of my questions.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I'm going to close the public hearing now and get into deliberations, and Commissioner Rodriguez, did you wish to make that motion you made before?
As I said, I was inclined to support recommended staff action, and after hearing the last speaker's comments and representations, I'm inclined to make that motion.
Thank you for asking those questions. Is there a second?
Yes, Commissioner Malter, if the motioners open to that we will accept Exhibits A and B, and the staff change on page 187 in that motion.
They will be included in the motion.
Thank you, I have a second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen, ladies, and thank you for your patience in waiting till we got to this item. We're out, up to the next item, which is item 8. It's LU05-118. Request for conditional use permit to legalize an existing retail business that includes the rental and leasing of durable goods, that is, cement mixers, bobcats, saws, utility trailers, generators, ladders, rotor tillers, small hand tools, tools, and floor sanders and polishers. I hope we didn't miss anything with that description. And retail sales of lumber, building and landscape materials, sand, decorative rock, wood chips, bark, and gravel material. You can't do anything that's not specifically listed there. All right. Becky, is this yours too?
I'm up again, it's Act 2. This is Becky Linder from County Planning, again, here to present to you conditional use permit number LU05-0118, Louise Webster. And a rata sheet was submitted to you this morning indicating that a revised PowerPoint slideshow was prepared for this project and is now included as Exhibit 10 of your staff The applicant is requesting approval of conditional use permit, of a conditional use permit in order to legalize an existing retail business which is currently operating without permits. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to continue to operate a retail business that includes the following: rental leasing of durable goods, such as cement mixers, bobcats, saws, utility trailers, generators, ladders, rotor tillers, and everything that was just read into the record by the chair. And the sales of lumber, building and landscape materials, sand, decorative rock, wood chips, bark, and gravel material. Five spaces will remain on the site for employees and customers, five parking spaces. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. No loading of materials will occur prior to 7:00 a.m. Monday through Sunday. The project site is located at 420 North Ventura Avenue, at the southeast intersection of Ventura Avenue, State Route 33, and Park Road in the community of Oakview. This aerial photo gives you an even closer view of the project site and its location. From a little bit of project history for a minute here, from 1954 until 1972, the project site consisted of a gas station and a 992-square-foot building. In 1972, the gas station was converted to an automotive and muffler repair shop, which included automobile sales, and this is pursuant to a planned development permit case numbers PD0872 and PD5110. In 2003, Greg Rents occupied the site and began operating the equipment rental and landscape materials, retail sales, and retail sales yard on the site without the required land use and building permits to do so. On June 4, 2003, the Resource Management Agency Planning Division opened a zoning violation case on the project, on the property site, and recorded a notice of noncompliance in October of 2003. Due to the applicant's failure to abate the zoning, this was due to the applicant's failure to abate the zoning violation. On August 23, 2005, the applicant submitted two applications. One is the CUP case before you to legalize the equipment rental and landscaping materials retail sales yard and to abate the zoning violation. And the second one is the parcel map waiver voluntary merger, case number SD050050, to merge the two legal lots that constitute the project site into one. On May 17, 2007, the Planning Division issued a revised notice of violation on the subject property for the repair of equipment outside of an enclosed building, storage of heavy equipment, sale of soils amendment to the public, and open storage of rental equipment on the property site without the necessary screening. On a December 6, 2007, staff conducted a site visit and verified that the applicant is no longer repairing equipment outside the office repair shop building and has removed all heavy equipment and soil amendments from the project site. In addition, the applicant has installed landscaping along the property line adjacent to Highway 33 as a visual buffer for motivers traveling northbound on Highway 33. A little bit of partial information, the project site has a general planned land use designation of existing community, and an Ojai-area planned land use designation of commercial. The project site has a zoning designation of commercial plan development. This slide shows the site plan, and it shows the existing structures, the existing shop, the office, the metal shade structure, parking spaces, the outside equipment parking area, rental equipment parking area, the open storage area, and the bin location for this landscaping and materials, storage, and sales. And there's an existing 499-gallon propane tank. And then, this is an oblique imagery again of the site, right here, and I have some more photos of, oh wait, something happened here. Some additional photos of the existing structure in the site as it is today, or at the time of the photos. Outside storage for landscaping materials, landscaping near the entrance, landscaping along Park Avenue, again, Park Avenue, the property line, the metal shade structure, sign, direction sign to the office, and then landscaping along Highway 33, Ventura Avenue. I'm going to go back one of my slides. I wanted to discuss the surrounding properties for a minute with this slide. The land uses that surround the proposed retail operation consist of a mixture of single-story family dwellings and one-story commercial businesses on lots that are similar in size to the project site. The businesses adjacent to the southern property line include a bank, it'd be down in here, a bank with a drive-through window, the Moose Lodge, the Oakview Post Office, and a mall. That would be down in here. And to the north of the site are a thrift store and a church, thrift store, church. To the west is Ventura Avenue, and across the street from the avenue is a strip mall and a market. Market and a strip mall. To the east are one-story, single-family dwellings and existing structures, the existing structures would not be modified and are consistent with the height, bulk, and scale of the surrounding one-story commercial and residential development. Moreover, the project doesn't involve any construction or demolition to facilitate the retail operation. Going to move forward to compliance with CEQA. The project is exempt from the provisions of CEQA under two sections in the CEQA guidelines. Section 15301, operating, maintenance, permitting, or leasing of existing private structures or facilities involving negligible or no expansion of the existing use, beyond that existing at the time of the lead agency's determination. And Section 15305A for projects which involve minor lot line adjustments that don't result in the creation of a new parcel or result in any changes in land use or density. Since the project involves the use of an existing office and repair shop building, it doesn't require any changes to the exterior of the building in order to accommodate the proposed use. The project will require the recordation of a parcel map waiver voluntary merger in order to merge two legal lots which constitute the project site into one legal lot. The merger of the two lots will not result in a change in the land use or the density of the project. The permit standards and supporting evidence are provided for your commission in the staff report, and all the findings have been met. Property owners within 300 feet of the exterior boundary of the proposed project were notified by U.S. Mail of the proposed project, and a notice was published in the Ventura County Star. To date, the Planning Division has not received any public comments regarding the project. The Planning Division notified the city of Ojai and Caltrans of the proposed project, and to date neither one has submitted any comments. In addition, the Ojai Municipal Advisory Council reviewed the proposed project and recommended approval of the project with a request that certain conditions regarding a sign plan, exterior lighting, and installation and maintenance of landscaping for screening from Highway 33, that be incorporated into the CUP, and the max recommended conditions are included in the conditions of approval. If you want, you can look at Exhibit 7, Conditions 20, 21, and 22. Those are conditions for signage, exterior lighting, and landscaping. I will now read the recommendations into the record. Based on this presentation and the staff report, the Planning Division recommends, find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guidelines, Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15061B2, Section 15301, and Section 15305A. Adopt a resolution to adopt the proposed findings and approve conditional use permit case number LU050118, subject to the conditions provided in Exhibit 7, and designate the Planning Director and the Resource Management planning director and the resource management agency as the custodian and location of the records of proceeding. The applicant is here today and is available to answer questions regarding the project. That concludes the staff presentation. Is there any questions of staff?
Before questions, Becky, I'd like to have disclosures. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written expedited communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Commissioner Dukas?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Otso?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures. Commissioner Malatara, Commissioner Westner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
All right, questions for Becky? Anyone?
Mr. Chair, finally.
Certainly.
Since they're asking for a voluntary merger, it's my understanding that because it's ministerial, you haven't put it in the recommended actions for us to approve.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. See all questions out?
Commissioner Dukas? No questions?
Any other questions? All right, Becky.
You're welcome.
He asked if he is permitted to speak, if the applicant wishes to speak at this point. No desire to speak? Are you confident? Boy, you're confident anyway. You're sure of it.
My name is Louise Webster, and my residence is 58 Watkins Way in Oakview. I don't know it would have any bearing on your approval, but I inherited this property and business and problems in July of 2007 as a result of a divorce. So I quickly moved to try to resolve this. I'm very happy to be here to hopefully get to the end.
So your lawyer got you this property, did he?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the economy tanked, and...
Any other questions? Well, thank you, I'm glad, since you took it over in 2007?
Yes.
I'm glad that we're going forward with this process. Now, thank you very much. Any other questions? Anybody else wishes to speak? Do we have any closing comments by the staff? Then I would love to close the public hearing, and what is your pleasure, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended actions on page 229 with the inclusion of Exhibit 10, the PowerPoint presentation.
I'll second it. We have a motion and second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much for waiting for your patience today. All right, the next item on the agenda is discussion, report by planning director on board actions and other measures or items the planning commission may wish to introduce.
The one item that I have for you is your next week's hearing, it's going to be on the 18th. We're going to come back to you with the answer to your five issues and questions or clarification points that you had on the scenic resource protection overlay ordinance, the Phase II of that ordinance. Unfortunately, I thought that the packet would be down here during our long hearing today, but I was just informed that it is about an hour away from being ready. So what we're going to do is send it out to all of you PDF, you'll have it at home. It's not very lengthy, you know, you have your original packet already.
Yes.
So it's just the, whatever, eight or 10 pages that we've added to it for the clarification process. So we'll send that to you electronically, and then the formal packet will be delivered to you in the morning, FedEx.
Thank you. So you're just responding to the issues that we brought up in that last meeting?
Those five very pointed issues. It comes in a format from MMO to you to I to saying, these are the five issues that you asked, here's the clarifications, or here's the way that the ordinance could be amended if you so choose.
If I may, just a point of where the county council would like to, because he's boxing up and give some more work here, is my understanding from that hearing that we are to only deliberate on those specific issues, not the entirety of the matter.
Right, you closed the public hearing. I'm not sure, again, I don't have my notes from last time, but I believe that you closed the public hearing. You'll still have to receive any public hearing on that day on any of those issues.
But as far, I'm sorry, but as far as scope and delivery, the reason I'm asking is because we did have, unfortunately, one commissioner not here. We're going to be limited to those specific items, so, because I know the chair's specifically asked that question.
Right, the commissioner who was not at, who was not present, if she has read the transcript and all the proceedings from the last time, she can participate fully in this next hearing.
But on our motion at the end of our discussion, we have to take everything, not just those five items, we have to move on everything that's been recommended.
Yeah, I think the project is fully before you, right.
The whole project, yeah.
You staff to come back on five separate points.
Right, and then we approve the entire project, or disapprove the entire project.
Depending what you want to do.
Good.
Well, I'm a little confused. Okay. Because I remember the chair specifically asking that we would only deliberate on these issues brought back.
But I asked that to try to limit the amount of discussion we were going to have, and county council said that we still have to let anybody speak on anything, but we have not approved anything. So wouldn't we have to approve the entire, or do all the recommendations?
No, no, my concern here is that I thought you wanted to limit the discussion just to those points, because you went through that reiteration.
I did.
Okay, so my understanding from council's direction was that that would be the only elements. Now, obviously, if those elements requires to segue into something else, I understand. But I'm just, again, because we disclosed to the public at that time that this is what we would be discussing.
Certainly, that's what you asked the staff to come back on, and that's the subject matter of this additional memorandum that you're going to be receiving, but you still have the full project, which is the proposed amendments to the scenic resources protection before you.
Okay, so we're not just limited to those in the discussion?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other discussions, any other comments the commissioners wish to make?
I know county council, I'm sorry again, county council was very specific about why we can charge 2,000 in one place and not in the other, how some ever, I just wanted to bring that up as a matter of record, because obviously it raised a concern for me. I know that I didn't want to pick about the county to write a check for $22,000 either, so I just found that very fascinating, that the whole concept of the discriminatory, and I wonder if there's any other apparent conflicts like that in our fee scheduling that you're aware of?
That is the only, that's the only thing that I'm aware of that's different in the coastal than the noncoastal, is the no charge for the appeal. And that's been that way for a long time, although the fee schedule, you know, is looked at every year, is adopted by the board every year, we go back to the board every year, and so that is the fee schedule that the planning department operates for the Board of Supervisors.
Presenting out, I would like to close the meeting in honor of Nancy Francis, who this was her last meeting, and please let her know how much we appreciate all the services she's provided, do as we serve her in need in my time, and I really hate to see her go, but we wish her well.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I'll let her know. She will be missed, she is irreplaceable, but if anybody knows anybody that's looking for a job for a manager of the county planning department, have them contact me.
Did you hear that, Robert?
Meeting adjourned, thank you.